It is six oh five on November fourth. I'd like to call the meeting to order for the Anchorage School District Board.
Is a competition for high school students to create media, PSAs, or flyers, or posters, or whatever, to talk about the fentanyl crisis that we have in our district and state. So those are a couple of things that we're looking forward to.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the board? Seeing none, um, next on our agenda is board conference and committee reports. Does anyone have anything they wish to speak to? A lot of times these are filed in a written report. Member Lessons.
I think it's a great opportunity to update the community on at least the Finance Committee meeting. We had a pretty packed agenda. I think one of the most notable things that we included was a memo from the Legislative Finance Division that shared the analysis from the state that if you were to update the BSA for inflation going back not to FY seventeen, which is when this year's eighth graders started kindergarten, but back farther to FY eleven, so that's the 2010-2011 school year, that was the peak year. So that figure would be one thousand eight hundred and eight dollars, bringing it up to FY twenty-five. And I've asked for further analysis on an inflation adjustment for FY twenty-six. But I think as we collectively consider the advocacy needed to add a well, to invest in our education system, I really appreciate having numbers from the state that are updated. So I think that's relevant.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions from the board? If not, we'll move to section C, which is the reading proficiency goal monitoring report from the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will give our team a moment to load the slides. Okay, thank you. So today's report will be the technical presentation on early reading proficiency. This is our technical report, so I'm able to just briefly go through these slides and then we can resume our formal conversation in two weeks. We can go to the next slide. On this slide, the board can see our school board goal on increasing reading proficiency to forty-six point four in May, 2028. And specifically, we're looking at the AK STAR, which is the assessment that produces both reading proficiency score as well as a MAP growth score. And we provide more information to the public and to the board as to when those snapshots were taken and how they inform our progress. Next. And then on this slide, we can see the progress on reading proficiency to date. And then on the chart below the graph, you can actually see the number of students that are at or above proficiency, as well as our assessment of overall progress towards our goal. And then, as always, we want to leave the board with this data disaggregated by special population, race, ethnicity, and gender. And then on the farthest to the right two columns, you can see the percentage change in students' participation on the assessment, as well as those who are testing at or above grade level from spring to spring, last spring to the spring before that. And then the next few slides that will provide an overview of the implementation strategies and next steps. So as always, this will be enrooted in instructional focus and really interconnected approach between professional development and building capacity of our incredible teachers and school leaders, along with frequent and regular instructional improvement cycles in data collection and data-driven action. And then this is really the heart of the strategic action steps that are live to date amongst the major pillars of curriculum, instruction, professional learning, data instructions, and multi-tiered systems of support. So these are really the critical implementation action steps that I would ask the board to review over the next couple of weeks, and I'd like for the team to come back. And then we can discuss more in depth as to how these and other strategies can really move the needle on reading proficiency, as this is an issue that we need to approach with urgency. And that concludes the technical report.
Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none. I'm sorry, member Donnelly.
Yeah, obviously, it's really concerning that at this snapshot in time, the proficiency for reading went down for these crucial grades. But we were hearing that we were experiencing some success. So is it the timing that's showing that? And do we still believe that we're having success with the new reading curriculum?
Thank you, member Donnelly. That's a great question. So this data point reflects the board goal with essentially summited proficiency. The ten percent point growth that you're referring to was for K one, and that was through a growth snapshot. So what that indicates is that our students are seeing growth, but proficiency is really a target that we apply to all students as the North Star. But of course, we want to celebrate the success. So you're referring to the interim goal metrics, and this particular technical presentation is on proficiency. So you're exactly right, and we can discuss both at our next presentation. But really, the data I wanted to put before the board would be reading proficiency through the AK STAR summative assessment. The data you're referring to would be the MAP growth assessment, M-Class Dibbles.
Seeing no other questions or comments, that brings us to section D of our agenda, public comment. Member Jacobs.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. At this point, I'd move to suspend our rules to allow all public testimony to occur at the first opportunity. And if there's a second, I can speak to the Y.
Second.
Moved in second to suspend the rules to extend our public testimony time? Did you wish to speak to it?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I think we've got excellent turnout today, which is always appreciated, I know, by the board. I think it's important to allow the folks here in the boardroom time to speak and then allow them to return home. We can continue our business once they're done. So I would ask that the board approve the suspension of the rules, and then I would also ask the chair to consider this vote, authority to allow the same order of our agenda to our current future meetings through the end of the year. So we prioritize public testimony and allow space for that to happen, and then continue our business after folks have allowed, been allowed to speak to us. Thanks.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, I will ask Ms. Sullivan to call the rule. I will say, if there's no objection, we will consider the rules suspended unless someone wants to call for a vote on this. And seeing, hearing no objection, we have suspended the rules. For the public, it's just to let you know, we normally restrict public testimony to one hour so that we definitely have time to get to our business. But we also recognize that we have more than an hour of testimony, and that would cause people to get home really, really late instead of just late. So we do want to give everyone a chance to speak first. And this brings us to that this is the time we hear from the public. We welcome your comments, which we are concerned about. We have set aside more than an hour at the beginning of the meeting for those who have signed up. And we will get to everyone and not make anyone wait till the end of the meeting, so I won't read that. Please note that all public comments are limited to three minutes. There's a timer right in front of the dais that will count down while you're talking. All speakers receive a courtesy alert when there's only thirty seconds left, a little bell that Sullivan will ring. Speaking time may not be given or shared with other people. When your name is called, please come to the podium, state your name, and direct your comments to the chair. Please understand, this is not a time for dialogue. We don't engage in a discussion. It is your time to speak to the board and our time to listen. Also ask that people, I know there will be a lot of heartfelt and emotional testimony, but we ask that you not give applause or react. We want every speaker to have an even platform to be able to come and speak to us without favoritism being shown by board members or by the audience as well. If you do have a handout to share with the board, please give them to Ms. Sullivan, who's on my left. And we do have a detailed page with boardroom decorum and guidelines that is at the door. So with that said, we do also take students first because we want them to go home and do homework and get a good night's sleep. So we will start. We do have about sixteen students that are signed up for testimony tonight. The first student is Cameron Posey. The second student is Elise Elliott. So both of you may come up and take a seat, take turns, and we will start it off. So if you would, please state your name for the record, and you have three minutes. The floor is yours.
Hello. Hello, my name is Cameron Posey. I'm a ninth grader at Diamond High School. I'm in the first class for the proposed academies of Anchorage, and I'm here today to say that I'm strongly opposed to the academies of Anchorage plan. The district is proposing changing our schedule to eight classes per semester instead of six, and advertising it as more opportunities for more electives. But what they aren't addressing is the fact that this will take time away from core classes like math, science, social studies, and ELA, all of which are critical for students to be successful and life-ready. Not only would the proposed schedule changes reduce class time for every course, it also reduces the frequency of classes. It seems especially challenging for students to only see their math teacher twice one week and three times the next. How are teachers and students expected to get through the full curriculum when we only have class on fifty percent of the days? And as it is due to budget cuts, we don't even have that many elective offerings. It's more important that we maintain adequate time in each of our six classes than that we add additional classes to each semester. Please do not move forward with any of the proposed schedule changes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Elise Elliott, if you'll state your name, you have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Elise Elliott, and I am here to testify tonight. I'm a sophomore at South Anchorage High School enrolled in Civic Leadership Program. I'm here tonight to discuss the significant impacts of the academies of Anchorage and the proposed schedule change on high school students like myself. I do not think that only having classes such as math and science two days a week is enough. It is better to have instruction from our teachers most days a week so we can ask questions and learn new material at a reasonable pace. We are not in college and should not be compared for what is best for college students. With the current schedule, we never go more than one day without having a class. And with this new proposed schedule, we might only have a class two days a week. More classes will result in more homework, which I already spend hours a day on. With less time in each class, how will we cover all the required information, and how will students keep up with the workload? How will teachers' workload be managed and so they are not overwhelmed? How will this change affect the Civic Leadership Program and other programs in ASD? Will I still be able to get college credit for my CLB classes even though the class time is reduced? I currently have almost no elective choice, and I've taken art three semesters in a row. I do not understand how the academies will offer me more choice. It appears I will actually have less choice because I will be confined to a pathway with set classes and very little choice of electives. I may not even get to choose my pathway. Thank you for your time, and I hope you take my concerns into consideration.
Thank you both very much. Next on our list, I have a first name Christopher that was going to speak to the schedule change. We didn't get your last name somehow. I'll return, I'm not seeing anyone move to the microphone. Dylan Hall and Kevin Zhang are the two next speakers on the list. You will state your name for the record, you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Kevin Zhang. I'm a tenth grade sophomore currently enrolled at West High School. I'm here today to express strong opposition to the proposed schedule changes for high schools in the Anchorage School District. Let me start off by talking about a friend that I had last year in my US history class. One day during class, I asked him what he did after school, and he told me he worked a full-time job at Fred Meyer's to support his family. Every day, he left after school and worked from three to ten. This job left him little time to do homework, no time to do any extracurriculars. He worked hard to complete assignments, but with his schedule, it was already difficult. This story is one of many students in ASD who support their families by working, leaving little time for homework. Of course, this was last year, where there were only six periods implemented. If ASD changes the current six-period schedule to seven or eight, it would mean thirty percent more homework for students. These students currently struggling will struggle even more to complete their assignments. My current science teacher, Ms. Kelly, has approximately one hundred fifty students in her classes combined. Every time after she assigns a test, she spends time because she wants, she spent, she puts in the time grading because she wants every student to succeed. For every test she gives, she has to spend at least twenty-five hours grading currently. She spends many hours every single day outside of class grading tests, even on weekends. I'm extremely thankful that I have such a good teacher. Unfortunately, yesterday, she fell off a ladder and injured her back. She's out today because of her injury. Do you know what she is doing right now? She is grading tests. This is the story of so many other teachers out there in the district who are already putting in extra time outside of their working hours grading assignments and tests. If ASD moves forward with this six-to-eight-period schedule, Ms. Kelly and other teachers like her will get at least thirty to forty more students. That would mean well over thirty hours of grading for one single test. This puts increasing strain on our already overworked teachers. This further demonstrates why the school district should not be moving forward with the schedule changes. ASD has shown that the new schedule changes will cut times for standardized classes by nine to fourteen hours, and this would mean cutting three weeks of instruction for each class. Cutting three weeks means that not only will AP teachers not be able to prep their classes for the AP test, they also are not able to get through all the content-based. The decreased instruction is severely detrimental to students' learning and AP scores. Everything that I have said clearly shows that the Anchorage School District should not move forward with a schedule.
Your time's expired. Thank you very much. Tracking back, Dylan Hall, are you in the audience? Not seeing him moving, anyone moving to a microphone. Andy Zhang and Molly McBride are next on our list. You have three minutes, if you'll state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Andy, and I am a junior from Diamond High School. I come here today to express my concern about the proposed changes to the high school classes' class schedule for the next school year. My high school, Diamond, offers many AP classes. As a junior, I take advantage of these AP courses that are offered at my school. Currently, I'm taking five AP classes. These classes allow me to engage with college-level content and potentially earn college credit. These courses are essential for my academic growth, and many of my peers feel the same way. However, the increase of the number of class periods proposed by the current schedule will severely impact AP courses. Kelly Lessons, a current school board member, wrote in June twenty-fifth of 2024 that it will decrease instructional time in each course. She said that when we change from six to seven courses, we lose four and a half weeks of instructional time. I want all the school board members to imagine losing four and a half weeks of instruction in an AP class. This is concerning, as AP courses already require time and effort to prepare for the national AP exams. As a student who has completed many AP classes, teachers are already feeling rushed to cover all necessary material. By adding more classes, it will only make this issue worse. As a result, students may not be as well-prepared for an AP exam, which would hurt their chances of earning college credit. In addition to these academic concerns, I'm also worried about the graduation requirements. Currently, students need twenty-two and a half credits to graduate. With this change of schedule, will graduation requirements be changed or remain the same for students already in high school? ASD hasn't made a clear plan to address this uncertainty. I've also talked to numerous peers and teachers about this issue. Almost all have expressed disappointment for the new schedules because of similar concerns I have stated. We believe that proposed changes may do more harm than good. I urge you to reconsider these changes. As a student, I want to be academically well-prepared for my future. We need a schedule that supports our success, not one that hinders it. Please take these concerns into account as you make your decision. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you for coming to us tonight. Ms. McBride, if you'll state your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Molly McBride, and I'm an eleventh-grade student at Diamond High School. While the academies of Anchorage pathways comes too late for me to join, its implementation will affect my senior year. Our district currently runs a six-period schedule, and I'm taking all six classes in person at my school, four of which are APs. I'm an act, I'm active in school clubs, and I'm a multi-sport athlete. The idea of having to add another class or two to my mental and physical workload is very unappealing. The idea of losing twenty-five percent of instructional class time but still having to cover the same amount of material is also very unappealing, especially when addressing the AP classes, classes, which have a nationally standardized test at its completion. I do not need two more classes or a secure pathway to become college, career, and life-ready. ASD has provided electives and opportunities to get me there. Furthermore, many questions have been left unanswered about these new academies. For example, will the credit requirement to graduate change my class? What extra classes would I take because I'm not part of the academies? The elective list is short and limited. As I ask the teachers and staff at my school about the academies and the effect it will have, I'm bewildered at the little acknowledgement that has been shared with them. They too share their concern about the academies moving forward. My goal is to graduate from high school and pursue a higher education degree. I'm sixteen, and I still do not know what that will be or which career path I choose to follow. I do not think it's fair to ask a fourteen- or fifteen-year-old what career path they want to pursue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Ally Gurney and Dalton Ante. You will start, Ms. Gurney. Please state your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Ally Gurney, and I'm in fifth grade at Bear Valley. I have been here since kindergarten, and I'm also the president of Student Council. Bear Valley has provided me a place to make friends. This is otherwise hard for me because I live in a neighborhood with few houses and lots of trees. It's hard for me to make friends, but for six years, Bear Valley has created that community for me. Shutting down the school takes that away from me. Bear Valley started a preschool this year, and I felt very confident as a kindergartner, and it was because I went to preschool. I had already learned to be around other kids I didn't know. Since Bear Valley started a preschool, it could help other kids be prepared for grade school. Ever since I started school, my teachers have been telling me to show my work. They need proof I'm not just using a calculator and actually thinking through the problem. I heard that some of the board members put my school up for closure before even knowing that we had just started preschool. If showing my work applies to me, it should apply to the people making these recommendations, too. I have heard that on student, I've been on Student Council for three years. Every year, we do a canned food drive. We fill an entire dumpster full of donated foods that goes to the Food Bank of Alaska. Last year, I don't, our donations helped feed four thousand seven hundred hungry families in this bank, in this, in need. Also, last year, we raised money for the Special Olympics. We completed the polar plunge and donated over seventeen thousand dollars to this organization. We are able to accomplish these things because our community is so strong. I know most of the kids at Bear Valley now, and they would be devastated to hear that they're, they might lose these traditions and their school. I don't understand why my school, which is almost seventy percent full of kids, would be one of the first to close. Our school needs more reasons on why it's one of the options for closure. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Donnelly, if you'll state your name for the record, you have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Dalton Ante, and I am a seventh grader at Goldenview Middle School, where I just finished my first quarter with straight A's. I'm a hard worker, honest, kind, and know how to persevere. All of these qualities were installed by both my parents and my foundation as a Bear Valley cub. I find myself confused on how on my former school it winded up on your closure list. Early in the year, my parents and other Bear Valley parents voted on a bond to improve our school, and I just want to close it. It seems to me that you have an obligation to the voters to do what you said you would do. All I have ever known is Bear Valley. I learned to ride a bike in the bus loop when I was four years old, and this for a long, and for as long as I can remember, my family has been coming to sled down the hill in the playground since winter. When I was five, I learned how important it was to anchor your letters and to sound things out when you were not sure how to spell something. I still use my Alpha friends to help me out. Fast forward to being eleven and the last graduating sixth-grade class, I learned how much I love World War II history and science. Each step of the way, I had the best teachers, ones that I still like to come back and visit. In addition to my education, my school also values being a good person and makes sure to reward goods, or good students for positive behavior. You see, at Bear Valley, it was not just grades that mattered. Miss Year and all of the other aim to produce upstanding citizens, and when you visit Bear Valley, it shows. I take pride in knowing I was raised with such high expectations. In addition to this, the friends that you make at Bear Valley, I love the kids in my neighborhood that the same that go to the school with. And my friends, even after making the jump to middle school, Bear Valley kids stick together. In a typical lunch at Goldenview, you will show that the Bear Valley kids occupy the same four tables. We genuinely endure, endure each other. Your proposal to close our schools and divide my fellow Cubs will destroy this experience for them. I love my time at Bear Valley and look forward to coming back to volunteer when I can. I also look forward to continuing the longstanding tradition of coming back in my cap and gown to read the letter I wrote to myself in sixth grade. Please help make sure my fellow Cubs can look back fondly on their elementary years at Bear Valley. Please remove Bear Valley from the school closure list. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Next, we have Bridgette Robinson and Sayorese Reardon. I apologize if I didn't pronounce that correctly. You will state your name for the record, you have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Bridgette Robinson, and I'm a Bear Valley board member of ARDS. The reason you should not, um, close Bear Valley, um, wait, um, sorry. The, hi, I'm, um, the reason you should not close Bear Valley is, um, imagine like an empty school with no one, with like no kids and no teachers, and it's just kind of depressing just to see that, like, I wouldn't imagine ever having it like that. Um, if you quote, number, I have three reasons why you should not close Bear Valley. Number one, we have over three hundred students in full classrooms. My class alone has thirty-one students. Well, two, some teachers will set, will be sent to other schools that I have not heard of or ever been to. Number four, it's, um, it's, it's kind of sad is to think that you have been to that school, and now it's being shut down. It's not very fair to anyone who's ever been there. But people need to agree with us. Other, I know may, know many people who think that we should not be able to, we should not close Bear Valley. I don't know many people who can help. I mean, I know very many people who can help, but I don't know many people that go to Bear Valley because, well, let's face it, I don't have as, I don't have five hundred friends that, and if I did have five hundred friends, you would make a difference, but everyone needs to agree with us. Because Bear Valley is the center of our community, and it's hard to, let's say you live there and you got sent to a school that's over here. It's harder to drive there than to just like be, um, like all the way over here, and then you have to drive across town to get to school. It's not very fair that you have to like, you went to a school, first you went to a school that was right there, you were your neighbor, now you have to drive all the way across town to just to get to school for seven hours. It's not really worth it. There's, there's a lot of people who are actually going through Bear Valley. I've heard that the part of the thing is the bus location. It's true, the buses are actually kind of hard. Um, the buses are kind of tricky, but it's still, um, it's still pretty good. It's still fine, it's still pretty safe. We can't do this alone, so. We can't do this alone, so get out there and roar like a bear.
Thank you for your testimony. And Ms. Reardon, if you'll state your name for the record, you have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Seer Sharir, and I'm in third grade at Bear Valley. I have been at this school my whole life, and I also visit a lot when my brother went to this school here, too. When I was in kindergarten, teachers did not know how to spell or pronounce my name, but they kept trying and they got it. This is an example of how dedicated and caring they are. I want to share four reasons why Bear Valley should not close. Number one, today, when I went to school, everybody was so sad to see our school might get shut down. You should come up and see um, how beautiful and hardworking the teachers are and kids are learning. This should help change your mind, and I really hope it does. Number two, I do not want to have to ride the bus for that long to get to another school far from my house. I live in upper Bear Valley above the school, and right now it's very easy to get to my school, even when the roads are bad. If I have to get to school down the hill, it would take a longer time to get there or home. Number three, I really don't want to get split up from my friends and also my nice teachers. They're the best and why we are the Blue Ribbon School. Number four, our school helps parents know that we have a preschool. It is fun to see little, littler kids in our school. Thank you for listening. Come and visit and see why Bear Valley School is the best.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Next, we have Gwendolyn Allen and Addison Martin. You'll come forward. And Ms. Allen, will state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Gwendolyn Allen. I've been going to Bear Valley for five years. And I want to discuss why we should not close down Bear Valley. Reason number one, we've been Blue Ribbon for two years. And another reason is you, it's like three minutes to go to school, and now it'll become eleven minutes to go to school. It will be a big change and will be hard. And I have four new kids in my class, and they will have to go to a new school within, like, that will be their third school they move to within like three years. It will be hard for them. And I know it will be hard for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Martin, if you will state your name for the record, you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Addison Martin, and I'm a third grader at Bear Valley. I like my school because we have great teachers and I have made good friends. It is a nice school. I love it. I would be sad to move to a new school, and my brother goes to Bear Valley. My little sister will start kindergarten next year. Thank you for listening. Have a nice day.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Sharice Day and Elizabeth Robbins, or Robinson, sorry, Robbins. And if you will state your name for the record, you have three minutes.
Hi, um, I'm Leo. I go by Leo, actually. Um, and I'm a senior at West High School, and I'm here to talk about the schedule changes being proposed. Firstly, I think that another schedule change would make things needlessly complex, not only for the incoming freshmen, but also for the students who are already in and used to the schedule that we have. The hours are already shifted back this year, and I think that more change to the schedule would not have the desired effect. Secondly, the addition of the mandatory freshman careers class has made it so that they are down a history class for this year. And the fact that that class is mandatory and not an elective will mess with the student's schedule, and the credits that they, and I think that the credits that they should have had should have been taken into account before this was implemented and not fixed by once again changing the schedule to rectify this mistake. Lastly, as someone who has been in a school with an eight-period schedule, I can say that it was not a good experience. The teachers had way less time with the students, and we all struggled a lot more in our classes than I do now in a six-period schedule block. While we did have other elective opportunities, that was because of the school that we were in and the funding that was available to us. That's not available in all of the ASD schools, and I think that it would cause more struggle for students than good. The teachers also had a lot of issues keeping up with the curriculum and ended up having to either put more material into a shorter period of time or cut important lessons from the curriculum so that the students were able to keep up. Overall, I think the idea of an eight-period schedule would cause more issues than solutions, and overall add more stress not only to the students but also to the teachers, something that I think we can all agree we all need less of. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Ms. Day, if you'll state your name for the record, you have three minutes.
Hi, my name's Elizabeth Robbins, and I am a junior and attend Service High School. I'm here to talk about the new math curriculum you guys implen- implemented this year. Math has never been my strong suit, but I've always tried my best. I came to that Algebra II class with high hopes because of this new curriculum, just to be met with more difficulties than before. The curriculum was introduced to us as more of an independent study-based curriculum. For the first couple of weeks, I had trouble adjusting to it, but eventually I thought I had gotten the hang of it. My homework got handed back to me and all said ten out of ten on them. To me, this meant I was doing good. Come to find out, homework is solely graded on effort and completion rather than if a problem is right or wrong. How am I supposed to know whether I'm exceeding in a concept if I'm not even graded on it? We aren't allowed test retakes or test corrections. We aren't even given a test review or study guide that we can use to help study. How can we be expected to pass when the curriculum doesn't even give us any resources to help us? We aren't even allowed to take our math books home. This new curriculum was supposed to help students, but instead has made it exponentially worse. According to Edsource.org, algebra is the highest failed math class. I'm a junior, and I take my grades very seriously. I plan on going to hu- going to college, and so do almost everyone in these math classes. But because of this new math curriculum, students are struggling, which causes their GPA to go down, and colleges will see that. The ASD started the freshman academy to educate students on careers and the trade schools. But these students will need to pass algebra to get into these trade schools. I talked to other high schools and students that attend these high schools, and I asked them about the Algebra II class. Half the kids have dropped the class because it is too unorganized. My goal here isn't to change the curriculum for myself, but to help students of Alaska Sixty. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, Kiva James, you're present. And circling back, Christopher, who wanted to talk about the schedule change, if you're here. And if not, if you will state your name for the record, you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Kira James, and I'm a junior at Service High School, and I'll also be speaking upon the new math curriculum implemented this year. The teachers expect you to teach yourself the math when the in-class assignment doesn't make sense to you. But the thing is, students have after-school commitments like sports, clubs, jobs, and they don't have the time to learn off of a YouTube video posted in Canvas. All the class time we have, and yet so many students are struggling. Between math, other classes, homework, jobs, and other commitments, students get burnt out and exhausted having to teach themselves after school. My mom, who's a substitute teacher, voiced to me how Algebra II never used to be this hard for students. Instead of focus on, focusing on implementing new things, maybe try shifting your focus to things that have worked in the past. Another point to many students is why spend your valuable time on homework that doesn't benefit you? Homework is graded on completion, not if it's right or wrong. Students don't know if they're doing it good. I had voices to my teacher, and she told me the answer key got posted after the homework is due. And this is an issue because by the time you turn the homework in and the teacher finally grades it, it's been weeks, and the class is already on a new subject. So the answer key is not very helpful for students to use. And as a dancer, I know when you practice your dance wrong, when you go to perform it, if you don't practice it correctly, then you don't perform it right either, and it's the same thing with math. When you practice the homework or in-class work wrong, on the test you fail, and you don't know what result you get because of all the work is graded on completion. Between all the YouTube videos, limited time, late answer keys, students are not succeeding. The new curriculum was supposed to be building blocks to succeed, but it's done the opposite. Instead of implementing new ideas, look back on what's worked in the past as beneficial to the students for the future. One last thing is many students rely on notes to do well in their classes. The new curriculum does not include notes, only a small summary that is not beneficial. My tutor preached to staple your notes together and study them. I found good use in using them to complete the homework, which became a source I can't use anymore. Without notes, students like myself struggle to complete the homework, which is extremely stressful and discouraging. Between all these factors presented, it shows how the new curriculum has done the opposite of what it was intended to do for ASD students. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much for testifying tonight. And checking back Dylan Hall, are you in the audience? If not, I believe that completes all of our students that were to be heard tonight. Thank you very much for coming out and testifying. Um, yeah. We are going to give priority to parents who are here accompanying students so that they can go home as a family. Moving on to that, the first parent on the list is Rachel Posey, followed by Beth Elliott. So if you'll come forward. You'll state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Um, good evening. My name is Rachel Posey, and I am the parent of two ASD students. I'm here today to urge the school board to make the responsible decision to pause the rollout of the academies of Anchorage. Uh, I listened to the work session earlier tonight, and I have a few comments about what I heard. In one of the early slides of the presentation, the administration stated that ASD's overall post-secondary rate is forty-two percent, and then indicated that when looking at the subgroup of students who took at least two CTE classes, the post-secondary rate increased to seventy-eight percent. The district is using this to claim that the increased post-secondary rate is due to the CTE courses, but correlation does not indicate causation. I'm sure if we looked at the subgroup of students who took at least two AP classes, the post-secondary rate would also be higher. So should we rework our entire system to encourage students to take only AP classes? No, that doesn't make sense. So why are we using this to justify reworking all of ASD's high schools around a new CTE curriculum that will require changing our class schedule? I'm also concerned that the administration justified leaving the six-period option off the survey that they sent out because we must move to a seven or eight-period schedule. But really, the board has the option to not change the schedule and to not move forward with the academies. At the June board meeting, when the first year of the Academies of Anchorage Plan was adopted by the board, it included an amendment that stated moving forward was contingent on adequate funding, funding. We have not received that funding from the state. Furthermore, in the sample schedule that the administration presented this afternoon, the sample student had multiple AP classes. Have you considered the impact of reduced contact time per course on AP curricula, which are nationally standardized? With less class time per course, it's inevitable that these teachers and students will have difficulty getting through all the information. And on the other end of the spectrum, the ASD State Proficiency Data Dashboard shows the AK stars data for language arts for ninth graders at only thirty-five percent proficiency or above. And for math, we're only at twenty percent. If we reduce class time, how do we expect to see improvements in these measures? Our current reality is that Anchorage does not have the necessary teachers or the necessary funding to successfully implement the proposed changes. If you move forward at this point, you will be shortchanging all students. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. You will state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Beth Elliott. Thank you to the Anchorage School Board and Superintendent Bryant. I appreciate the opportunity to testify in the fact that ASD is trying to make our schools, district more inclusive of all students and provide opportunities for college, career, and life. However, as the parent of three children enrolled in ASD, two in middle school and one in high school, I have serious concerns about how ASD is planning to implement the academies of Anchorage. Most recently, ASD sent out a flawed survey regarding the number of periods in the high school schedule and the block schedule that would be required to implement seven or eight periods. The survey was changed in the middle of the survey period with no notification, negating any validity in the results of the survey. The fact that the Anchorage School Board is voting on changing the high school schedule while providing no details on what classes will be offered or where the funding will come from for the teachers to teach the additional classes. Changing our high schools to a seven or eight-class schedule results in a substantial loss of individual class instructional time, while at the same time resulting in a significant increase in workload for teachers and students. Neither of these are good options for teacher retention or student success. The ASD website has a colorful graphic showing the proposed academies and pathways at each high school. However, the community has been provided zero details on the implementation of the academies. The website tells us there will be fifty-eight pathways offered within ASD, five to nine pathways at each high school. What classes will be a part of each pathway? What certifications will the students earn in each pathway? Currently, our high schools have alarmingly few electives for students to take. How will you staff three electives, one for each sophomore, junior, and senior year, for each of the fifty-eight pathways being proposed? This is equivalent to a hundred and seventy-four elective classes within ASD. What is the curriculum for these classes and where are the qualified teachers to teach them? ASD's Academy website states that as part of the academies, all students will have direct career and industry exposure. How will ASD provide this? Industry and college field trips. How many staff are being hired to plan and schedule these field trips? Where is the funding for the staff and buses coming from? Junior and senior year internships. It is my understanding the gifted mentorship program services approximately fifty students within ASD and has problems finding enough professions slash professionals slash companies willing to offer internships. How does ASD plan to provide internships for over forty-eight hundred juniors and seniors? College credit and industry credentials. Fall of twenty-twenty-five is quickly approaching. Where is the list of college credit and industry credentials each student will be able to obtain for the pathways? Co-ops and apprenticeships. Again, what co-ops and apprenticeships will be offered, and where's the funding come from? I fully support ASD accepting grants that improve our schools and enable us to hire highly qualified teachers who can teach rigorous core classes and electives that graduate students ready for college, career, and life. It concerns me that we are modeling our academies. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you very much. Next, we have Bridgette McBride and Hanley Robinson. And if you'll state your name for the record, you have three minutes.
Good evening. I am Bridgette McBride. I'm a product of the Anchorage School District, and I am now a parent of one recent graduate and two children currently enrolled at ASD. I'm here tonight to express my strong concern over the implementation of the academies of Anchorage. I am concerned because we are in a district, our district is in a financial deficit. We've been gifted a grant, but we do not have the long-term funds to sustain the academies. And if I am mistaken, please share with the public how you foresee continuously paying for this program in the years to come. Otherwise, why are we even considering it? I am concerned because we are a district lacking a full, robust staff. Over the last several years, there have consistently been full-time teaching positions left vacant. The academies require an even larger workforce. Where do you, where will you find these qualified teachers? I am concerned because you recently released a biased survey under the guise of asking Virginia one public feedback. A seven or eight-period schedule, as the academies require, leads to less instructional time per class, but still the same amount of material to cover. The teachers now have more classes to teach and more students to instruct. How can anyone be successful? I'm concerned because your change to the biology for all and the chemistry curriculums currently under review are leading us down a path of lower the bar and one size fits all. As one who just went through the college application process, we need these advanced classes offered for our kids who are capable and want to pursue competitive higher education. As you make room for more career-oriented classes, I am very concerned we will lose our access to advanced and AP classes. I am concerned because for a district that loves statistics, whether it's the test scores from the many tests you make our children take for proficiency or the graduation rate or absenteeism, it seems you are pursuing a program that does not guarantee improvements on any of those fronts. In fact, in some districts with the academies, it has made them worse. And lastly, I am concerned because the fashion in which piecemeal information regarding the academies has been released comes across as purposely misleading of what you're trying to sell us. Remember that what sounds great on paper or works in other districts does not mean it will be successful here. Please listen to your current teachers and staff, parents in the community, as they express concerns. There are just too many answered, answered questions to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Um, Hanley Robinson and Bonnie Gurney. You'll state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Bonnie Gurney. I'm a residential real estate appraiser. I'm also a Bear Valley parent. And I'm coming here tonight to speak as an appraiser in response to the rubric, as well as the work session that was discussed about Bear Valley having no growth potential. For a real estate professional, that is laughable. Southside has the only amount of concentrated land for development. If you have read any article about the housing supply in the last five years, you'd see we're in the middle of a massive housing supply crisis. The municipality of Anchorage is pushing for development. The largest builders in Anchorage are building as large-scale developments as possible. MLS, this is a ten-minute research that, um, I would imagine the administrative- MLS, this is a ten-minute research that um, I would imagine the administrative people that be should have done before they decided to announce our school as on the chopping block for not having growth potential. That's beside the point. In ten minutes, I was able to verify fifty-two homes newly constructed in the four schools of the elementary boundaries that will be affected by a Bear Valley closure. We're talking about closing one school, maxing out the other three in an environment where everybody is pushing to build on South End. So fifty-two new construction homes that came through MLS alone. Today, I spoke with less than a hundred parents in Bear Valley and was able to verify at least another thirty vacant lots that are permitted that will be built on. I can send all of the hard data. Um, and I absolutely will in a proven testimony, but any real estate professional will assure you that the only place that there's massive population growth as a goal that can happen is Southside Anchorage. So closing an elementary school is incompetent at best. Um, I'd like to respond to a news clip that was extremely upsetting and infuriated a lot of parents. And that was the administration quoting, um, or being quoted to say that he understands that parents have big feelings about school closures. And I wanted to talk about big feelings really quickly. We are very reasonable adults. We understand the predicament that you guys are in. You have schools that are half-empty. That's a hard truth. If you had a rubric that made sense, if you had transparency, and if you had things that were consistently applied, we could deal with a big feeling of sadness. But right now, we're angry and we're frustrated. Those are big feelings that have to do with the incompetence of the administration level coming up with this rubric. It has to do with the school board that wasn't even aware of some of the issues and the things that we do at Bear Valley that makes us special. Those can be talked about later. But as a real estate professional, seeing that lack of growth potential is one of the main reasons for Bear Valley up. That conversation should be over. In five years, I have great data to show that we have a potential three, three hundred children that would be joining our end of town. And I'd really like to know what the plan is if you close Bear Valley, how you're going to fit those kids in at that point. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. And I will ask folks, please, women applause and everything. We do want to give everyone a chance to speak tonight. If you'll state your name for the record, you have three minutes.
Uh, good evening. My name is Hanley Robinson. Um, I am not prepared to testify tonight. I thought I had signed up for the nineteenth, so forgive me. Uh, but I'll try to do my best off the cuff. Um, I am the parent of a fourth and fifth grade student at Bear Valley. My husband and I have lived in Anchorage for sixteen years. And when it was time for our kids to go to school, um, we moved to the Rabbit Creek area to send our kids to Bear Valley because we believe in the power of public education and in the power of the public school, uh, and the neighborhood school. Um, there were, there are charter school opportunities or immersion programs, but we wanted our children to go to school with their peers um, and with the kids who are near them. And that's what they've done. And they will tell you that they love their school and to move them from there at this point in time. And this is just an appeal to your emotion and a lot of people say things that are um, more reasonable and more data-based. Um, but I think would be a huge shame. Um, the parents and teachers and kids sitting behind um, you, I think will demonstrate the utter shock that we all experienced on Friday afternoon, noon to learn that our school was on this list. And the reason for that is because our classrooms are full, our school is full. My kids haven't been in a class since kindergarten. I didn't have fewer than twenty, that had fewer than twenty-eight students. Um, so to see a school and that is thriving um, and to understand that it's going to potentially be closed um, doesn't make a lot of sense. And I think that's a lot of the frustration in this room. Um, so again, I wasn't prepared. My daughter Bridgette does a little better off the cuff than myself, possibly because of her education from Bear Valley. Um, but thank you for your patience. Um, and I look forward to your decision and um, you may hear from me again. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Have Annette Reardon and Dallas Allen. And it's Reardon. And if you'll state your name for the record, you have three minutes.
Hi, good evening. Annette Reardon, thank you for this opportunity to provide personal testimony to all the board on the closure of Bear Valley. I can imagine this is not an easy time for you all either, knowing that the decisions you make will have direct impact on our children and the future of Alaska. I stand before you not just as a concerned parent, but also as a healthcare provider and a dedicated member of the Bear Valley community for the past twenty-two years. Bear Valley Elementary is more than just a school. It is a lifeline for our children and families, a place where they grow, learn, and thrive. My son graduated from Bear Valley and is now an eighth grader. My daughter Saoirse gave testimony recently. Our neighborhood school is full of proud, a proud Bear Valley alumni, or excuse me, our neighborhood is full of proud Bear Valley alumni and current students. Not only is the school a source of joy, but also the physical location is where families gather, play, celebrate, and learn. If you've been up to our school, you'll know that we are located farther from other community resources. This makes Bear Valley Elementary extra important, special, and necessary. As a professor of nursing, I understand the profound impacts that a supportive community can have on the social determinants of health. Bear Valley is a place where children feel safe, valued, and understood. A place where they learn essential, social, and emotional skills that will benefit them throughout their life. Bear Valley clearly meets the district's definition of a properly resourced school with diverse course offerings like Spanish Club, Battle of the Books, Cross Country, Arts and Class Club, and full-time resources such as a nurse and a physical education teacher and rotating specialists who teach health and art. Bear Valley has always been a place where teachers want to teach. And this helps with recruitment and retention for the district. In addition, Bear Valley provides essential lifelines for families with childcare needs. When the news hit that sixth graders would be moved to middle school, the innovative and caring team at the school, along with Bear Valley Community Association, decided to help the childcare crisis in Anchorage by offering a preschool pilot program. This is in addition to the already well-known and respected before and after school and summer childcare programs. Spaces rented from ASD within the building, offering revenue for the district. Instead of closing the school, an option could be to invest in early learning and potentially offer an all-day preschool option. Yet another win for the district and the families in our community. When my husband and I faced a challenging time navigating a Hodgkin's lymphoma diagnosis during the COVID pandemic, Bear Valley was a rock. The teachers and staff were incredibly supportive, going above and beyond to ensure our well-being. Their compassion and understanding made a significant difference in our lives. Where instead of worry, we could focus on our health and our family and our well-being. To close, I urge you that the devastating loss of Bear Valley to our community would be profound for the future of Alaska. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Uh, Ms. Allen, if you'll state your name for the record, you have three minutes.
My name is Dallas Allen. You'll forgive me that I, I too thought I would be speaking on the nineteenth, but here we are. Uh, being a former uh, Bear Valley alumnus myself, having moved here just in the age of my daughter Gwendolyn, who I'm a very proud pop of Bear of. It saddens me that it's would behoove you to close an anchor point for our community that has been there for so many years. It's been a source of joy and learning and growth for children. Myself included, I have lived up here for the last thirty years. I have fought to move and stay within Anchorage and to come back to the place that I moved as a child so that I could give my children the best education in the best location with the best teachers, surrounded by the best people. I am very proud to have lived here in Anchorage. I believe in our pioneering spirit and I believe in our dedication to our children, to our people, to our land. And I am very thankful that you would listen to us. It upsets me when I read how our school is now underpopulated, even though we just removed sixth grade. I don't understand it. You would take from one to give to the other and yet claim everything is under, underpopulated. I, I sit here dealing with my big feelings. I sit here trying to think and rationalize why this would be done to this community. There are many, many other places that I've seen much closer together, much more easily accessible to be able to bus children to and from that would make less of an impact than this community that sits in the far corner of our city. I would ask that you would all think closely about closing such a place that would allow us to gain so much love and compassion from our community up there in Bear Valley. Please come take a look and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Ashley Martin. And yes, if you'll state your name for the record, you have three minutes.
My name's Ashley Martin. Um, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. Um, so closing Bear Valley Elementary is not the right choice. I currently have a third grader and a first grader at Bear Valley, and my four-year-old is excited to start kindergarten there next year. I also have an infant who I want to go to Bear Valley in five years. Bear Valley Elementary is the school that I attended as a child, where I thrived academically and made lifelong friends who I still have relationships with today. Bear Valley fosters a strong community. My third-grade teacher, Ms. Robinson, still substitute teaches at the school and recently was awarded a forty years of service award from the district. My fourth-grade teacher, Mr. Straight, shows up to any Bear Valley event he can as he has grandchildren attending the school. My sixth-grade teacher, Mr. Farrell, has retired from ASD and is currently the executive director of the school-age childcare program that provides before and after-school care, as well as the preschool program at Bear Valley. My mother works in the front office where my children can give her hugs throughout the day as needed. Bear Valley is not only a school, but a community, one that is a very important part of my children's life. Bear Valley Elementary is the top school in the district. They have won two national blue ribbon awards in the past ten years. Seventy-one percent of students are proficient to advanced in math and sixty-five percent to advanced in English Language Arts versus the school district's average of thirty-five percent in math and thirty-five percent in language arts. That is nearly twice the district average. Ripping apart this high-performing school is not a smart choice. Bear Valley is currently ranked at a sixty-nine percent utilization, only one percent lower than the seventy percent optimal utilization. Twenty-one schools across the district are under Bear Valley's utilization percentage, and five other schools have the same utilization of sixty-nine percent. How is this utilization ranking calculated? Show us the supporting documents that got you to this number. Out of the other twenty-six schools, why did you choose Bear Valley? A school that is one of the best schools, not only in the local district, but in the state. I suspect the only reason Bear Valley is currently rated as underutilized is due to ASD moving the sixth-grade classes out of the elementary schools. Did the utilization calculation account for this entire grade level being removed? Did the utilization calculation include the pre-k program that was started this year? Was consideration given for the before and after-school program? Were there considerations for the SAC summer program, who operates out of Bear Valley in the summer months? Closing the only school in the district to earn two blue ribbon awards and who has consistently higher testing scores doesn't make any sense. I struggle to see how the ASD administration and superintendent recommending a high-performing school to be closed aligns with a broader board and ASD goals to achieve student success. ASD needs to be transparent with the raw data that went into this decision. Rather than closing consistently top-performing schools, you should be striving to get the other schools in the district to perform as well as Bear Valley Elementary. This process is also moving too fast to make this big decision, and time needs to be taken to fully research all the issues that are being brought up by the community members, as well as the impact this decision will have on the community. Please do not close our school. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much for your testimony. That completes all the parents that we have listed that are here with students tonight. Um, we do thank both parents and students for taking time coming to talk to us about this. We know it is extremely important to you. Um, dropping back to the beginning, Jarrett Bowling and Seville Leno. I may not be saying that correctly. But you're next on our, I'm sorry, Siggen.
I have two boys that just had.
Oh, okay. Um, yes, if you're a parent, we'll go ahead and let you speak because we want you to, to get home with them.
Thank you. Um, just.
And if you'll state your name for the record.
Um, good evening. My name is Wei Chen. I am parent of two high school students in the ASD. I'm here today to share my concerns about the proposed change from six uh, classes scheduled to seven or eight class schedule. I believe this change will do more harms than benefits for our students, teachers, and the community. Since my kids started high school, I've seen how busy they are with homework and activities. I want them to get back by ten-thirty every night, but their schoolwork pushed their bedtime later and later. They never go to bed before midnight, sometimes two o'clock in the morning. With ASD's new start time, they are getting up at six-thirty for sports, leaving them with barely five hours of sleep. Adding more classes means more homeworks to do every night and even less sleep time. We must know more classes don't actually um, automatically mean students will learn more and learn better. Instead, this change could lead our students towards burnout, affecting both their health and ability to learn. The impact on our teachers negatively too. I regularly check online to check my kids' progress. I have noticed many classes are slow to post-grades. Teachers sometimes let students use answer key to check their own homework. Are teachers too lazy? No. It is because, like students, they are already overwhelmed. Many teachers just struggle to manage multiple courses, assignments, and student needs. Any more classes will reduce the ability to prepare effective lessons and provide meaningful feedback. We want real learning experience, not inflated grades. Also, ASD already faces challenges hiring and retaining teachers. This change would likely make this situation even worse. The district has already made several big changes this year. Shifting school start times, launching the freshman academy, moving sixth grades to middle school. We haven't had time to fully evaluate the impact of these changes. To add another big change right now feels rushed. I urge you to slow down and carefully evaluate the effect of these changes before introducing new ones. Finally, the survey the district sent out in October was disappointing. As a parent, I was frustrated to see that we will only give a choice between a seven or eight-period schedule. There is no option to keep a six-period schedule. Why? This felt like the district didn't want our input. I know other parents felt the same way. It undermines the values of openness and the respect that we hold dear in this country. Again, I'm strongly against the change. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we have Jarrett Bowling and Seville Leno. I'm sorry if I'm not pronouncing that correctly. Thank you, sir. If you will state your name for the record, you have three minutes.
My name is Jarrett Bowling and I'm here to voice my concerns about the lack of parent involvement in planning the academies program. In the federal grant application, ASD committed to being open, transparent, and inclusive of parents and students. Does not meet these requirements. When you approve the master plan in June, the district only once asked for parent input to rank academy pathways. AST has a history of holding town halls for major changes. Yet it skipped a town hall required by the grant and informed me it would not be rescheduled. Instead, I received a list of engagement successes involving businesses and professional groups with only five parents providing feedback out of hundreds of attendees and twenty-seven hundred hours of engagement. That's just five parents in the district of nearly twenty or forty-three thousand students. When I asked if the academy's curriculum would be open for review per district policy, I was told it wasn't necessary because the board already approved the master plan. In the recent schedule survey, parents could only choose between new schedules with no option for the current one and the referenced research summary concluded that no schedule is better. Yet, these studies all assume equal instruction time, which doesn't apply here. These issues make the survey results invalid. ASD claims that the academy's model will increase graduation rate and reduce absenteeism, yet ASD's model district in Nashville moved away from the block scheduling after it failed to deliver these outcomes. Why are we moving towards a schedule Nashville has abandoned? I raised my concerns with Ms. Cohen Boyer at the U.S. Department of Education, who assured me that meaningful parent involvement is both an expectation and a requirement as outlined in this grant. ASD has not complied with the requirements they set to promote student and family involvement, offer true opportunities for parent engagement, to include parents as community stakeholders, to communicate with all stakeholders, to have open engagement with families, and to be open and transparent to the public. This has not been done. Why is our district excluded parents? Why is our district excluded parents, and why is the school board preparing to move forward without their involvement? I'm not asking you to vote no other academies today. I'm urging you, give it back to the district. Read the grant for yourself. ASD must be held accountable for the commitments that they made. Engage parents fully. Hold the town hall. Be transparent about the true costs and required number of employees. Open the curriculum for review per its own standard and provide clear evidence-based research for these changes. Parents do not just deserve the chance but are actually required to be involved during the creation and implementation of this Academy program. Parents seem to be treated as a partner, not as an obstacle to maneuver around. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Lino, if you'll state your name for the record, you have three minutes.
My name is Sevilla Lino, and I have three kids in ASD. I am urging the board to keep high school on a six-period schedule. My kids do not need additional courses. They need frequent contact with their teachers. There is a significant loss of class time per course when moving to a seven or eight-period schedule. The new schedule requires additional teachers we don't have. Just last week, Mears Middle School lost four teachers who've moved back to the Philippines. How are we going to staff these additional courses that are required with the proposed changes? Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Carrie Skinner and Jean Miller. You'll come forward. You will state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Carrie Skinner, and I'm a mother of a high school freshman at Diamond High and a seventh grader at Mears Middle School. And I work in the private sector here in Anchorage. My comments today are regarding the unrealistic viability of implementing the academies in the set timeframe, given the limited financial and human capital resources that exist. I have read the hundred and fifty-nine-page Academies of Anchorage Master Plan and can appreciate the time involved it took to develop this new approach. In the master plan, it's noted that the population of Anchorage is projected to continue to decline for the next five years. And quote, "A shortage of employees in Anchorage creates stress in the rest of the region," end quote. This also applies to Anchorage School District. The Academies of Anchorage will require four to six additional teachers for each of the eight high schools, as well as a version of that number for the four alternative programs already in existence. That's forty-eight to sixty-four additional teachers needed for this program to begin next year when there's already a teacher shortfall and teachers are quitting and retiring. Where will the Anchorage School District find these certified staff when the Anchorage unemployment rate is currently a three-point-six percent, down from last year? Compounding this is the outward migration of potential workforce who are either leaving or not choosing Anchorage as a place to live. Again, I ask, where will the ASD find the State of Alaska-certified staff, co-teachers, occupational instructors, and academy coaches in the next six to nine months that the master plan has outlined as needed for the academies to be successful? The Resource Management Tactical Plan is the shortest of the tactical plans listed in the master plan and begins with developing processes to request needed financial resources, whether that's FTE, equipment, training, or soliciting donations from the business community. I did not see a budget listed as part of the master plan and understand that the program must be funded in the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six budget. What is the total cost of the academies? ASD has not been transparent in this total cost, other than to say it will be in three phases of funding. And while I commend ASD on receiving the almost fifteen-million-dollar fostering diverse schools grant from the U.S. Department of Education, where will phase-two and phase-three funding come from? And what will be cut to afford the academies since ASD currently has a budget deficit of sixty-four to eighty-four million for the coming year? I believe we have great programs already in the Anchorage School District high schools that we can expand and build upon while working with business, industry, and community partners to help our students be ready for what's after graduation. But rushing an implementation with limited financial and human capital resources is not the way to do it. I do not support this initiative and will do everything possible to make sure my children have an alternative.
Thank you for your testimony. If you will state your name for the record, you have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Jean Miller, and I thank you all for allowing me to speak tonight. I am the parent of two children, one that graduated from the Anchorage School District and is currently attending school out of state. And then I also have a sophomore in high school. Um, I'm also a teacher in the Anchorage School District and was born and raised here. So I have seen the potential of the school district. I've seen, um, the great education that my children have received. And I'm here tonight with, uh, hoping to share my concerns about the academies. After listening to all the student speakers, I uh, appreciate them being here and speaking their truth because that is so much of what I see as a parent of a high school student. Um, we have this program. It appears to be looking for a solution to our problems we have in our district. But there are so many questions that have been left unanswered. We have funding questions. We have staffing questions. We have questions about how teachers will teach these classes. If right now we have very, very bare-bones elective schedules because we don't have the staff for that, so how are we going to increase, um, classes without having more teachers? How are our kids going to handle having more classes? Right now, watching a sophomore juggle six classes? Uh, I can't even imagine increasing that one or two more classes. Uh, should our students have choice? Absolutely. I fully support that. Um, do we want to make sure we have options for kids that are going to college, who are not going to college? You want to go into a trade? Absolutely. But we need to make sure that in implementing a program, that we have our answers, our questions answered. We need to know where the money's coming from. We need to know where the staff is. We need to know if the staff is on board. I mean, what do the high school teachers think? They were already the social studies teachers were handed this new job of teaching the freshman academy. That here's your curriculum, go teach this new class. So what are they going to do? And all of a sudden, we needed an engineering teacher and we're asking them to be the engineering teacher. Just so many questions. So our students, our whole community deserves us to take the time to slow down to answer the questions now before we plow forward. Fifteen million dollars, it's awesome. It's amazing, but it's not worth us getting into a mess down the road when we have no more funding and, um, we have taken our schools and we've just turned them on end. Um, I wanted to just comment that right now, as, um, a parent, I saw my student, my student at South. He had friends who were offered two art electives. They didn't ask for any art electives, but there were no other electives available for them to maintain their core classes because that is just the slim pickings right now. Also, they just, over the summer, cut honors English. So as sophomores, you get either regular English or an AP class. Thank you. I hope you consider.
Your time has expired. Thank you very much for your testimony. We have next Molly Brown and Brian Malta. And I will ask the, the audience to withhold applause or, or any other reaction. Thank you. You'll please state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Molly Brown. Um, I'm a graduate of West Anchorage High School a long, long time ago. And, um, returned to live and work in Anchorage after graduating from Duke University where I went after only taking six classes in a day or whatever it was back then. Um, and I guess the point of me being here, besides like commending all of these wonderful students and teachers who have come up and provided you with real-world experience is to give you another perspective. When I found out, I have an eighth grader at Goldenview, and when I found out that he was going to go into middle or high school, having to choose an academies, um, pathway or whatever it's called, because I don't really even understand it as a, as a parent of an eighth grader. I don't understand what that means for my child. I'd hope you understand what that feels like. I mean, I've learned more sitting here than I have the entire time I've been a parent of a middle school teacher. Let me tell you this, though. When I saw that there was a legal pathway, I asked myself, what is going to be taught to these young fourteen-year-olds about being a lawyer or what does that even mean? Because when I think of being a lawyer or being any professional who has a career, I think, like, what does it take? It takes a good writer. It takes a good reader. It takes a good listener. It takes somebody who knows how to do math. Even me in my lowly job as a lawyer, I have to know how to make sense of financials and all of the things that go into just general math. I have to understand U.S. and world history. And when I think about in this society and this, this time period that we're in, taking away time of class time from kids who, who need to just have the basics, I wonder, like, where are we, where are we going to leave them? When I was a freshman in college, I went, I went to school at Duke, like I said, but I was going to be a doctor. And I'm a lawyer. Because I don't know. I didn't know what I was going to do, and I needed to go experience it. And granted, maybe the idea of allowing students a chance to take a pathway will introduce them to something. But where are you going to find the people to mentor these students? It's my understanding right now that there are fifty, um, gifted mentorships that don't have mentors in this community. How are you going to find three thousand mentorships? How are you going to get the kids there? How are you going to transport, transport them? What if, what if one parent can, but another parent can't? Where do you find the money for those types of programs? Um, how will my child choose an academy? I still don't understand that. And what if his choice is something that is a popular one? How will you choose between kids who want to all be engineers or lawyers or go into those pathways? These are the concerns I have. There's too much left to be answered at this point. I don't understand how you can implement a program where the funding is unknown and the program is undefined. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Ms. Malta, if you'll state your name for the record, you have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Brian Malta, and like the last time, I'm not here to tell you why Ford NGL academies are bad for Anchorage. Today, I'm here to talk to you about transparency. First, I would like to address what has not been made transparent. The fact that the move to bring sixth grade to middle school is an essential part of Ford NGL model was not made transparent. Who is going to pay for the annual three-and-a-half million dollars, which does not include teacher raises or benefits, is not clear. Who paid for several ASD administrators to go down to the lower forty-eight and to tour and promote Ford NGL programs is not clear. The fact that graduation requirements will need to change to meet Ford NGL goals also has not been made clear. Why ASD's website has Anchorage designated as a Ford NGL community? Or why Ford NGL's web, uh, Facebook page extends a heartfelt congratulations and a warm welcome to Anchorage, Alaska? The newest member of the Ford NGL family is not transparent, especially since this board meeting is supposed to be one of the meetings to vote on that decision. But let's move on to what has been made transparent. First, the district does not have the money right now to fund this program for years to come. And to wait to see if the legislature approves additional funding for next year is not a logical plan. What's the plan? Two, three, five years from now? It is clear that ASD does not have one. It is clear that the administration of ASD does not trust its community or its teachers to be able to create positive learning environments for its students, though they think that Ford NGL, who has no ties to our community, can. It's clear that many high schools throughout the district have in the past had academies called pathways within their schools, but were cut due to lack of funding. It's clear that our students are struggling with the basics. As it was shared last board meeting, only thirty-four and a half percent of our eighth-grade students are proficient in math. And the percentage of third graders proficient in language arts is only thirty-two-point-four percent. Recognizing this makes it clear that we need to spend more money and resources at the elementary level. They need to retain students who are below the benchmark because we know that once students pass third or fourth grade below proficiency, the reality of them ever catching up is very slim. It's clear that because of the lack of skills our students have, that we have an attendance problem at the high school level. And that only sixty-eight-point-four-eight percent of our high school seniors were on track to graduate last year. It's clear that many of our students feel overwhelmed as it is with six classes. Yet, the proposed schedules will add one, if not two, additional classes to their schedule, give them less time to complete their work under the guidance of a teacher, which will in turn increase their stress and have a negative impact on their social emotional health, which will negatively impact their achievement. In addition, the proposed program is not equitable. If students have real choice, then they should be able to go to the school that offers them the pathway they desire. And to get them there, they will need buses, which we once again do not have. So what this means is that the families that have the means to transport their children will have choices, but those families that cannot will not. And the last thing that is glaringly clear is that we currently do not have enough certified teachers to fill our classrooms until we see all the current positions filled. It's not a good idea to introduce a new program which requires even more teachers.
Thank you very much for your testimony. We have Wendell Smith and Andrew Garcia. You'll state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Linda Smith. I'm a parent of two service high school students. I came to express my strong opposition to the proposed high school bell schedule changes and the academies model that supposedly requires them. First, the schedule carves instruction time away from core academic classes. Each class would have about twenty percent less instruction time overall. Well, the argument is that taking additional, that taking additional classes would fill this gap. The question becomes what those additional classes are. For it, for it not to be a burden, this assumes that each resulting class would cover less, have less academic and educational rigor. ASD is already appearing to follow this by, that, excuse me, it's demonstrating this with its Biology For All approach this year and the proposed chemistry curriculum changes, which result in less depth, less homework, and less preparation for advanced or post-secondary learning. It is unclear how advanced or AP classes would adjust, although the result may be that students would no longer be appropriately prepared to succeed in them. Second, less frequent class times are detrimental to learning outcomes. Most high school learning opportunities such as math, writing, science, foreign language, art, and music benefit from short and frequent instructional events. ASD's reference studies comparing bell schedules demonstrate that learning outcomes of block classes over daily classes are at best mixed, and those cited only compare outcomes with equivalent instruction time, equivalent class sizes, and equivalent teacher loads. And remember, this proposal is a decrease in instructional time per course, an increase in class size, and an increase in teacher workloads. And third, having less frequent classes with less overall classroom time would also decrease meaningful teacher and student relationships. The changed bell schedule and academies plan would result in higher student-to-teacher ratios, documented to be the most important contributor to learning outcomes. There are a lot of other concerns for existing teachers, but I'll let them and their union address those with the details and knowledge they deserve. If the goal is to modify graduation requirements to allow for more career preparation classes, then that could or should be pursued independently. And if this reflects, reflects a poor understanding of the plan, it would be really nice if ASD started answering questions that families have been asking for over a year. Starting with why we are proposing to change from six classes to seven or eight classes with the Nashville model district is supposedly reverting back to six classes because of failing outcomes at their academy programs. I appreciate ASD and the school board's goals to improve and prepare students for life, but please do not support changes to the bell schedule. If any career-based funding increases are realized, please direct them to expanding and enhancing King Tech opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Mr. Garcia, either one is fine. You'll state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Andrew Garcia, and I'm here to, uh, lend support to the students who spoke earlier about their concerns with the lack of education taking place in the math curriculum, specifically Algebra II. I have a son who goes to service high school. Um, he's been an AB student in maths his entire career, and now he holds a OC. I was wondering why this was happening, so I went to the parent-teacher conference to learn a little bit about more what's going on in the classroom. I found out that for the first ten to fifteen minutes of class, there's no instruction. Students are given work without giving instruction on how to proceed in Algebra II, which I found very interesting, especially as this was being explained to me by his teacher. Then she gives a little bit of guidance and sends the students off again to try to figure out Algebra II without a textbook that explains math. And they do some more, and then they get their homework, and they go home, and they turn in their homework, which comes back ungraded, and they get hundred percent credit for turning it in. That's right. They get credit for just turning in their work. It comes back ungraded. Then the teacher posts the answers, not how to do the math, but just the answers to the problems that were given in the homework. And she also posts a YouTube video of a teacher teaching the class that she's choosing not to teach because she's being told this is how Algebra II is to be taught now. And I know this sounds ludicrous, and you probably listened to those students earlier saying, like, I don't understand Algebra II. No one's teaching Algebra II. It is true. The teachers are being told not to teach Algebra II, and that teachers, students are supposed to figure this out on their own. There are no quizzes along the way for kids to gauge where they're at and the teacher to see where the students are and their understanding of subject matter. They just get tests, five tests, lowest grade dropped. And there's no checking along the way. I asked the teacher, I go, hey, can I get a whole, a book so I can help my son with math? He doesn't get a book. They don't have books. She said, go talk to the principal. I talked to the principal. I wrote the principal an email following our conversation. No book. She said she'd try to get one from Diamond. This is true. I ordered a book. I took a picture of what I thought the book was. I emailed it to the teacher. She confirmed the book. I purchased the book. I still don't have it. My kid doesn't have a book he can come home with and take, like, learn from. He takes learning from a YouTube instructor online that the teacher posts on Canvas. I asked the teacher, how's the bell curve? How are kids performing? She goes, well, you know, there's a bell curve. It's, it's, it's like the lowest mid-seventies. I'm like, when I went to school, most kids were in the eighties. I'm like, when I went to school, most kids were in the eighties, the mid-high eighties, and you had your outliers in the A's and a few outliers in the C's. No, no, no. And I asked her, how's this doing? She goes, it's not going well. You should go talk to the school board and the principal. So here I am, talking to the school board and principal about the failures of our school district in teaching Algebra II in the math curriculum, which hasn't changed in decades.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we have Sally Bennett and Jennifer Neff. You will state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Neff. I am a teacher of over twenty years. I teach math at South Anchorage High School, and I'm currently the math department chair. I wanted to talk to you today about my concern of moving to a seven-period day. In my opinion, one of the biggest indicators of success for my students is the number of days I see them in my classroom. At South, we do a block schedule, so I see them four days a week, looking at the twenty-four, twenty-five calendar. That comes to one hundred and forty-one days. If we switch to a seven-period day, that means we go down to three contact a days, which doesn't seem bad, one less day a week. But that comes to thirty-six less days I will see a student in a year. So I have to make some really hard decisions if we move to this next year. I have to figure out where am I going to lose those thirty-six days? So I looked at my Algebra II classes. I looked at my AP Calculus class, and I said, okay, what would thirty-six days look like? I counted up the number of days in Algebra II that I don't teach new material because I said, okay, I'm going to have to cut that. It's going to be like a college class. Every day we learn new material. We don't review for the test. We test the next day. Algebra II, that's twenty-five days. Twenty-five days this year, I'm not teaching new material. I have to cut thirty-six next year if we move to a seven-period day. AP Calc, that's thirty-seven days that I don't teach new material, but that also includes an AP review. If we cut thirty-six days next year, I have to teach new material, and the next day they have to take the AP exam. Algebra II, I know in the past was discussed as one of the largest indicators for college success. How am I going to teach new material every day? And if a student doesn't understand, say, I have to get through these standards, I have to teach new material. We want to have equal access for students to succeed in high-level math classes. I don't know how to do that if the burden on the student now becomes they have at-home tutors or the parent support to be able to teach the material. I have days where I clarify and make sure they understand the material. I don't know what I'm going to do if I have to cut that. I don't know what I'm going to have to do if I start having to combine lessons to introduce a new topic, pause for five minutes, and then abstract the concept because I have to combine in the same day. It's not number of minutes, it's number of days I see a student in a year that really makes a difference. We talk about absenteeism and how that could be a major issue. I could have every student absent for thirty-six days. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. You will state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Sally Bennett, and I'm here as the parent of three Anchorage School District students. My concern today is standardized testing. I understand that you guys, the data is important, but to be useful, the data has to be meaningful. The sheer number of standardized tests that is given to our students is absurd, but my real issue is there's not a single test that goes from K to twelve. The MAPS test is given twice a year, but we do not start giving that until third grade. My older kids have MAP data from K through two because we were in a different school district in this state. So I have a clear data curve from K through eight for them that is meaningful data. Uh, my youngest is currently in third grade. At the last meeting, you were discussing math benchmarks, and let me share with you the data that I have from her standardized test that she has in math. This year, she has taken both an I-Ready test and the MAP test. The results from I-Ready have her as one grade level below and the seventy-three percentile. But on her MAP test, she has high average and in the sixty-fifth percentile overall. How is anyone supposed to compare these two scores? More importantly, how are educators and board members supposed to compare these two scores? If you're looking at data of students and how they've grown over time, it doesn't do much good to compare apples and oranges. The amount of time it takes out of a teacher's week to give a standardized test is not insignificant, and it does not just impact the days that the whole school is testing. There are often students absent during testing when they have to be pulled out at a later date to complete the test. That student is then missing out on the instruction of that day. And depending on how many students are being polled, it might even make more sense for the teacher to not teach new information during that time period. The amount of curriculum we continue to try and pack into a smaller and smaller window is not helping our students. It would be more advantageous to give the students more time to learn by reducing the number of tests they are given. During the last school board meeting, it was brought up by both your expert team and a couple of board members that we continue to change the standardized tests that are given. These changes make it even harder to interpret the data that we have. All of these tests also cost our district money, not only for the testing, but often the extra test proctors are brought in to help with the testing process. Another takeaway I had from the last meeting where we discussed the math benchmarks was that the district is spending time evaluating the test and how it aligns with the curriculum. There was mention of perhaps changing when some things were taught if they were going to be heavily tested on. I think this all sounds like a good idea, but it also sounds like we are teaching to the test. I really hope that our goal as a district is not to have students who take good tests or who are good test takers, but to have students who know where to look to find the answers they want and students who ask good questions. I really hope the district can stick with both the test and a curriculum for a significant amount of time so we can get meaningful data on how our students are doing.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Next, we have Lindsay Flagstad and Rachel Blakesley.
Hello.
You'll state your name. You have three minutes.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Lindsay Flagstad. I'm a mom of three. My middle son is in the inaugural class of the academies. My youngest daughter would enter academies in twenty-twenty-six. I'd like to preface my comments with my appreciation of the effort to expose our students to vocations, occupations, and professions. I also applaud the specific effort to provide career and technical education to economically disadvantaged special education and English learner, English language learner students. However, any good intention can fall victim to its implementation. This seems to be the situation that we are in with the academies. There's significant risk involved in the acceptance of temporary grant funding. To minimize this risk, it's important to propose a scope of work that you are confident you can satisfy during the life of the project. Yet academies constitutes a major overhaul to secondary education without a clear plan or permanent funding. My issues with the academies relate to logistics, funding, and transparency. Twenty-seven pathways across twelve career clusters are proposed. As mentioned in numerous previous testimonies, ASD lacks the staff and curriculum necessary for the meaningful implementation of these. I'm also concerned about the guarantees behind student selections. So how does the district intend to honor each student's selection? The numbers of students in various pathways is bound to change annually. Does the framework have the capacity and the flexibility to allow students their first choice? If students' first choice cannot be guaranteed, what will the metric be for selecting who gets their first choice? And how will you transport students if their first choice is not offered at their homeschool? I would love to see our public transport system built out as proposed to include a bus stop at every high school by May twenty-twenty-five. But how realistic is this considering the current workforce shortages that resulted in rolling blackouts for school bus service in twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three, and periodic elimination of the routes and decreases in the frequency of service within the municipality? Moreover, how do you intend to provide CTE experiences for cohorts of over two hundred, two thousand students? There are several facilitating groups identified in your infographics, but who are your on-the-ground community partners? Meaningful internships require significant commitment from mentor as well as the mentee. How will you support and compensate mentors in profit-driven sectors? The district has requested fifteen million dollars of funding over five years. How will we continue to support academies at the end of this award? Um, see, I'm running low on time. So my opinion, this is poor execution of a good concept. My suggestions are that you postpone academy until permanent funding, postpone academies until permanent funding is in place. If you must continue with academies, please consider retaining only the freshman course and rejecting additional funding, making the program optional, or localizing the program with respect to time or geography. For example, at one of the elementary schools that are slated to be closed that are close to your Title I high schools. Thank you.
Time's expired. Thank you very much for your testimony. Next, we have Rachel Blakesley and Marnie Schaefer. And if you'll state your name for the record, you have three minutes.
Sure. Um, my name is Rachel Blakesley, and I am a former educator and current Bear Valley parent. I'm here today because I am deeply concerned by the rash and ill-informed recommendation to close Bear Valley Elementary. This is not just any school. It is among the highest-performing schools in our district and stands as an exemplar of what public education can achieve. Yet instead of celebrating and learning from our success, the administration seems determined to shift resources away from us because we are not a charter or immersion program. The administration stated this evening that retention of special programs like immersion and charters were informed not just by the board, but by community survey results. I filled out that survey, and never did I read a question like, do you prioritize charter, immersion, and special programs over high-quality core academics? Our school is a shining example of what access to an excellent public education is supposed to deliver. By ignoring our track record of academic achievement, you are failing the very students you claim to serve. How can you claim to be a public school district serving the best interests of public school students if high-quality education and student outcomes aren't even factored into your rubric? Closing a school without accounting for its academic success in a district struggling with low proficiency scores makes your rubric fundamentally flawed. Additionally, the current assessment of building utilization has neglected a crucial factor, our preschool programming. These early childhood educational services support young learners and working families in our community, yet they were not included in the building utilization rate simply because of who pays who. They were described as rentals by the administration, similar to renting a basketball court or a swimming pool. Early childhood education is a critical factor in preparing students for kindergarten, but because the program is not a full-day program yet in its first year, and because it's run by a five oh one C three, does not count as an asset to our community. By disregarding these programs, the district paints an inaccurate picture of Bear Valley's actual capacity and impact. Tell me what school has the capacity to receive these rapidly growing programs? Finally, the district's assumption that our children can be transported to more distant schools without having issues is naive at best. The confidence of the transportation department does not reflect the daily reality that our families will face. Longer bus rides mean earlier mornings, less time for family activities and homework, and more fatigue throughout the day, as well as a very predictable loss of learning from late arrivals. We live in Alaska. Winter is our longest season. It is your responsibility to factor in the reality that large snowfall will be a common occurrence, not just in our region, but especially in our communities and our mountainous areas where the weather is often very different than further down the hill. I have a lot of unanswered questions about your data, which I have emailed the board and the superintendent. You have a responsibility to prioritize decisions that genuinely serve students' educational needs. I urge you to reconsider your decision and protect your commitment to a quality, accessible, public education for all. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. We had Miss Schaefer on the line. She was to testify telephonic, telephonically, but her call dropped. Um, if you're listening, please do call back in again, and we will put you in the speaking order. Julie Fogey and Haley Wilkinson. Yeah, I apologize if I mispronounced that.
Oh, got it.
I'm good.
Yeah.
You'll state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Yes, thank you. My name is Julie Fogey, and I had prepared an entire speech that I have pivoted away from after watching the school board work session today because I really want to respond to some of the data that you guys heard and present a different version of it from my own experience. So I'm going to start at the beginning of that rubric. When the gentleman talked about staffing effectiveness, they mentioned that the art and health teachers at Bear Valley are split, costing the district money because they have to travel during their workdays between schools. This is not accurate. We do have shared health and art teachers, but they have a two-week block, so they're not spending any of their day that the district is paying for transferring and traveling between schools. They also factor in the percentage of combination classes in this section, and Bear Valley has none this year. So also important to note. The next element is school impacts, including special education. And as the chairperson for the district's Special Education Advisory Council and a parent of a child with an IEP and multiple needs, I can speak to the quality of that department and the resources it employs to ensure its students' needs are met at length. In fact, it is a fully-staffed department with no current job openings, and that is a real rarity in this district for special education. Next up is community growth potential, but I feel like a fellow parent, Bonnie, really spoke well to that and has a lot more data points there, so I'll leave it with what she said. But for size and utilization, I do wonder if the sixty-nine percent utilization rate includes the new preschool that started this year or that community association that serves one hundred and eighteen children so that their parents can work with an active waiting list? Or if they consider the summer programs held there, which includes fifty percent of enrollment from students at other schools? I wonder too, how the utilization can even be held as a factor at all when according to today's work session, we discovered that there is a waiting list right now to get into Bear Valley. Presenters today also talked about transportation, but I think the question should not be whether it's doable, which I do doubt, but whether it's safe and in the best interest of our youngest students. Road conditions going up and down the hillside are treacherous in the winter, and unlike many other areas, there aren't a lot of alternate routes. They talked about access to main roads, but Rabbit Creek Lane is a two-lane road on a steep hill with only bumpy neighborhood cut-throughs as an alternative. And it gets backed up or stopped altogether much more frequently than during a rare snowmageddon, as they mentioned. Ask any of us who live there. Perhaps more than anything, I am shocked by what didn't make the list when considering this rubric. If the purpose of rightsizing is to deliver effective educational services, then doesn't it make sense that the current educational services received are not only relevant, but incredibly significant? We have done our homework. We have watched the meetings and analyzed the arguments, and while we have many questions, we need the administration to clarify.
Yeah, Chris took care on our response. Bear Valley should stay open.
Your time is up. Thank you very much for your testimony.
Hi, my name is Haley Wilkinson, and I'm speaking on behalf of Bear Valley. I will try not to get emotional because it's a very emotional thing for me and my family. I've met my husband at Bear Valley in third grade. We have worked to come back to our school to live in the same area that we grew up in. We have a preschooler at Bear Valley. I paid six hundred dollars in registration fees to get him into a preschool. And when Bear Valley opened their doors, I cried because I was so happy to bring, sorry, hold on. To bring my kid back to my school early. I was thirty-six, twenty-one, and eighteen on the respective waiting lists that I was signed up for for those other preschools. And I got it immediately and signed up for both sessions so that my kid could go four days a week. When I went to the, to the conference at the beginning and I learned that Rick Farrell was my sister's teacher and my husband's brother's teacher, one of their favorite teachers for fifth and sixth grade, was going to be the director. It totally satisfied me because I was considering privatizing my student, which is a big issue with ASD because we are losing our students not to moving out of state, but to leaving our district while they still live in the homes within our area. And this is something that's happening because of the decisions we're making, and these decisions that we continue to make are going to push people out of the district like myself because we moved to this area. We have worked to get back to where we were. Our neighborhoods are multi-generational Bear Valley alumni. I personally am a contractor, and I have built seven homes in the Bear Valley area in the last five to ten years, all of which have housed families that have school-aged children or younger. I sold two houses to kids that I walked home from school with in Bear Valley because they too wanted to move to our community. As a contractor, I have four more houses slated in the Bear Valley bowl just so that people can move into our area because we have some of the largest growth in our area. On top of which, when I have looked up the distance that we'd have to drive our students, it is twenty minutes from my house in Bear Valley to any of the proposed schools. And when you add a bus to that and you add bus stops, my six-year-old is going to be on a bus sixty to forty, sixty to eighty minutes a day, bussing up and down the hill. That does not seem right at all. When you look at the other schools, they're all within a two-mile radius of each other. This is a big thing. This is a big feeling. We are going to feel big feelings, and the reason that we do is because our community is strong and our community is together. Watching us come together has made me feel so much more, so much more empowered in realizing that I made the right choice to choose Bear Valley, to not privatize my student. I chose it because of the impact that it made. I went to other schools when I was younger, and when I went to Bear Valley, that's when my proficiency raised, and I wanted that for my child as well. Because of the school, it's been the same way from the beginning.
Your time's expired. Thank you very much for your testimony. Your time's expired. Thank you very much for your testimony. We have about an hour of testimony left, and I've had a request for a break. So we're going to take a short 10-minute break for recess, and then we will be back for the rest of the testimony this evening. Thank you.
Families and buses already commute a great distance to reach Bear Valley over some of the most treacherous and poorly maintained roads in all of Anchorage. Current bus routes for Bear Valley students already have stated transit times of over 30 minutes, which are frequently surpassed in winter driving conditions. There is no possible way bus routes to schools further away would be able to operate within the 45-minute threshold stated at your October 15th, 2024 work session. I request that you send buses on these proposed routes under winter driving conditions and report the actual times these routes will take, including the time that you would sit at each stop to allow a five-year-old in full snow gear to get on and off that bus. I'm sure you will find that this far surpasses the 45 minutes and in the idealistic best-case scenario, bussing times based on dry road conditions. A final incredibly important factor to consider is the presence of the Bear Valley Community Association, or BBCA, operating out of Bear Valley. BBCA rents three classrooms from the district and pays annual rent. Please provide evidence that BBCA's rental has been factored into our capacity percentage. BBCA operates before and after care, summer camp, after-school specialty programs, and new year this year preschool. The preschool is in a pilot program, but has been a very successful. All signs point to an enrollment of approximately 20 students next year. As establishing childcare programs that unused portions of buildings is a stated priority of the board, please provide evidence that this program has been factored into your recommendation for Bear Valley. In closing, I know the board faces very difficult decisions in a time with flat funding. I recognize that school closures are one way to close that funding gap. However, I can assure you that closing Bear Valley is not the right choice. Come visit us at Bear Valley. See you first.
Your time's expired. Thank you very much for your testimony. John Grace and Kim Wilkerson. Sean Grace here. Kim Wilkerson. I'll come back around later. Joan Wilson and Richard Wilson. If you'll state your name for the record, you have three minutes. Thank you.
You pass it around.
Good evening. My name is Joan Wilson. My husband, Richard, and I moved to Bear Valley in 2010. We have a daughter who attended Bear Valley Elementary. She's currently a student at South. For purposes of Bear Valley, that does, for purposes of Bear Valley, that does not matter because it's still our school. I have many personal opinions to offer you, but I'll save those for another day because today I'm testifying on behalf of the Bear Valley Community Association Board of Directors, which voted unanimously yesterday to protect Bear Valley and save our school and to put all our money into everything we can do to save the school because the mission, our only mission, is that school. Other than for our phone calls over the Other than for our phone calls over the weekend with some of you, I'm assuming most of you have never heard of Bear Valley. But now that we are here, it's important for you to learn about us and the unique partnership we have with the school. I am confident that with this knowledge, all the children in ASD will be better served if you replicate our model district ride rather than close our irreplaceable school. I'm going to turn to BBCA in a second, but I also want you to know back in 2010, you took all the kids in Potter Valley out of our school because we were overcrowded. We were at five hundred thirty-eight capacity. Never was said, hey, we're going to take those kids and then close your school down one day. BBCA is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit corporation. We formed in 2003 in light of ASD's long ago decision to abolish community schools. Who remembers those? Community schools? You do, Mr. Donnelly. We had an active community school at Bear Valley, and we knew it would take our local support to get it going. So we formed or to keep it going. Our mission then and now is to enrich the educational and recreational experience of students at Bear Valley Elementary and the residents of our unique mountainside community. We have done so for twenty years. When ASD and other nonprofits decided that it was too expensive to run pre- and after-school care programs, we stepped up. We stepped up and have run those for twenty years. After adjusting to the new changes in the school finish times, we're currently at full and wait-listed capacity of one hundred eighteen children. And to address your recent decision to remove our sixth graders without telling us you're going to close our school as a result, we also took up the empty space and tried to do what we've been trying to do for years. Find space to run a pre-K program for our, our kids. When our daughter was young, I had to potentially send my child to Government Hill for childcare. We're doing that for eight kids now, forty kids next year. Slow down your decision. That's my number one request. Slow it down. Get the data, test your rubric, and come to Bear Valley. If you're going to close our school, come to Bear Valley. Don't make us go all the way out to Chugiak, your first meeting, the two farthest places in the city. Please, slow down.
Thank you for your testimony.
We gave up four seconds.
I gave up four seconds. Go for it.
I don't know how to use that anymore wisely. I can't get more passionate than my wife about this school and this community. It is a long-serving school. Our daughter is, she said, a sophomore now at South. And it is important, not only to us, but all the members in this, in this entire community.
Can I ask you to lean forward to the microphone just so everyone can hear?
We're shocked at not getting the data, not understanding the rubric, and not seeing the raw data because I think to make a rational decision, I think you're missing the mark without understanding the good that Bear Valley does to the community. And the problem with the schools in our city and around the country is the lack of community. Neighborhoods are falling apart because families are falling apart. If you would look at Bear Valley, you will see the strongest parent-teacher association, the most passionate families. We get more family participation in simple things like movie nights or after-school programs or Saturday picnics. It's because all of those families come together, and our schools are safe. It's the at least one of the top, the newest three schools to be built. So it's not an old facility, given the rest of the schools in the district. It is not old. It's very clean, very orderly. If you have not been to Bear Valley during the school day, you come and see the kids there. They're wonderfully well-mannered, polite, and it should be used as a model throughout the district and not taken down and scrapped for an experimental program. If that's where you're trying to find funding for, it's going to cause you problems in, in later years because it's the only area in Anchorage that has growth potential. And we have a waiting list of people to get into school. We have a waiting list for teachers that want to teach at Bear Valley because there are teachers in your district that want to leave the schools they're at because those schools aren't able to effectively teach. They don't have students that have been nurtured. They just, it's a problem. And you should be using Bear Valley and its families and techniques as a, as an example and not tear it down. There is just no way around that. Good luck. It's not an easy decision for anyone.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Adrian Michael and Kathleen Lyons are our next two people on the list. And if you will state your name for the record, you have three minutes.
Okay. My name is Adrian Michael, and I'm a member of the Bear Valley PTA as well as a Bear Valley parent. I currently have children in first and third grade as well as a three-year-old who I intend on enrolling in Little Paws Preschool next year. After spending a lot of time this weekend researching as much as I could, I figured at some point I would find logic in the superintendent's recommendation to close Bear Valley Elementary. I found no such logic. I found no reasoning. When my children were small and my husband and I were looking for a new home, the first thing we did was look at schools in the area. We looked at test scores, teacher retention rates, and distances from our neighborhood to where the school would be. We thought that Bear Valley Elementary would be an ideal school. We, as well as many other families who currently attend or have attended Bear Valley, heavily weighed our buying decision on homes on what would qualify as in-zone for Bear Valley. In making that decision, we did not put our children on lottery lists for charter schools or immersion programs. We knew that Bear Valley was an excellent school, and spending the last four years volunteering and helping in that building have proven that in spades. Dr. Bryant, you said that our district is an open-choice district, and families can apply where they would like. You are effectively stripping us of that opportunity because we chose to send our children to our neighborhood school. Being that they are in first and third grade, they no longer qualify for entry into an immersion program, and chances of getting into a preferred charter school are very low. The best chances for those schools are at kindergarten entry. Bear Valley holds an excellent standard for academics. I know you've all seen the numbers, but I'm going to tell you again. During the last year's State STAR testing, seventy-one percent of our students scored at proficient or advanced, and sixty-five percent of our students scored at proficient or advanced in English Language Arts. In today's work session, administrators stated that exceptional students will be exceptional anywhere. If you are inferring that somehow Bear Valley students are more capable than students at other schools, that is what I would like to know. There is a reason why we have a seventy-one percent proficiency rate, and students at other schools are achieving eight percent rates. Bear Valley Elementary is a home to three hundred and thirteen students, which is more than thirty other schools in the district. We're at sixty-nine percent capacity, which is higher than twenty-five other schools in the district. We have enough students in our school that your proposed plan would spread them, spread them over three different schools, directly going against your goal of keeping communities and cohorts together. Moving our students to these three schools would put all three of those schools at ninety-six to ninety-eight percent capacity, leaving no room for incoming families in the many new homes and subdivisions that are being built in South Anchorage. I'd also like to reinforce the massive value that the Bear Valley Community Association brings to our school in the South Anchorage area in general. BBCA provides before and after-school care for over a hundred students. The schools you are saying that you will send our students to do not have before-school care, and their after-school care programs are full and at waitlists. If you think that they will magically get more spots, you are being nice.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Kathleen Williams. Not seeing anyone coming to the microphone. Katie Roers and Irene Alnitsky. I'm probably not saying that right. If you will state your name for the record, you have three minutes.
My name is Katie Roers. I have three children who attend Bear Valley, and I am the school's PTA president. When news broke on Friday afternoon that Bear Valley was being considered for closure at the end of the school year, you can imagine my shock and disappointment. Bear Valley has been serving this community for forty years, and it has teachers who have spent their entire careers there over, only to return to sub and volunteer. When my family moved to Anchorage from Texas, buying a home in an area with a neighborhood school that produced high test scores, retained teachers, and made a positive impact in its community was vital and the sole focus of our search. Bear Valley was it. The families, PTA, and BBCA worked together to provide numerous specialty programs for our students. The PTA has helped bring opportunities such as Spanish Club, funding the Spelling Bee, supporting an art club, choir, and more. We have updated safety features like replacing classroom blinds and purchased technology, including TV's for our classrooms. BBCA brings before and after care childcare to, for one hundred and eighteen students with a waitlist that would otherwise be unavailable to our students. They have started pre-K housed within Bear Valley with projected twenty for next fall. In the summers, they offer families a full-day summer camp that serves around a hundred students, and as mentioned, fifty percent of them are attending from neighboring schools. They also rent the three classrooms from ASD to bring those services to our community and pay ASD roughly fifteen thousand dollars a year. Bear Valley is located centrally to the area that it serves. Being on the hillside does not, does present its issues, especially in the winter. Roads are not, not often prioritized, making commutes for families tough. However, closing our school doesn't fix this problem. It just makes it worse because we still live there. Car drop-offs and bus rides get longer and harder, likely pushing against the forty-five minute max mentioned at your October fifteenth meeting. Over the last several years, ASD has invested significant funds in the longevity of Bear Valley. If the plan has been to close it all along, it does not make sense that these investments have been made, given the shortsightedness of this decision. In the capital improvement project, Bear Valley is set to receive additional funds for renovations totaling approximately eight million dollars voted on by the bond. Should closure of Bear Valley occur, what will happen to those allotted funds? I invite you all to come visit our school to see firsthand the phenomenal teachers, students, and families that walk through those doors each and every day. It is my hope that by the number of people in attendance this evening and the testimonies that you have heard, that you will, the board and administration, be guided to a decision.
Thank you for your testimony. And if you'll state your name for the record, you have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Irene Alnitsky. Thank you for taking the time and your dedication to serve Alaskan children and families and listening to all the parents' concerns. As an immigrant child, I was taught by amazing teachers to speak, write, and read in the English language. I have astounding respect to all teachers and believe that this is the most valued profession in America. I also learned to have trust and faith in decisions that school districts make for the benefit of families and students. Sadly, this is changing. With the decisions that I have experienced and seen being made in the past two years by the ASD have extremely questioned and disappointed my faith in the ASD's decision-making process and interest to support communities, neighborhoods, families, and the ability to keep schools open. That's why now I can't stay silent. Your decision now is to shut down one of the best things that our family has labored for in our American dream, our Blue Ribbon Awarded, Family-Oriented, Parent-Involvement School, Bear Valley Elementary. The time change was a disappointment to us, parents, to us parents. We sucked it up. ASD taking our sixth graders out of, out of elementary school into middle school, we remained patient. But now you're deciding to shut down the best thing that our students and parents have in our city, their neighborhood school. We cannot bear it anymore, and we'll advocate and speak up to keep it alive for forty more years, at least. My husband and I worked hard to build our home here in Bear Valley area and start our family here for our three children to receive education from experienced, loving teachers in the community like Bear Valley Elementary. My husband and I are home builders in Anchorage hillside area and are solving cities' housing problem. We have been actively developing and building homes in and near Bear Valley Elementary for the last ten years. The clients that purchased our homes moved into this area to specifically be in Bear Valley School and allow their children the opportunity to learn specifically here. As you know, this area of Anchorage is growing due to available land. Real estate professionals' data shows that this area will continue to grow and bring additional young families and their children to this school. Two new subdivisions were just put in, in direct vicinity of our school, adding forty additional homes in the next few years, adding additional children to our Bear Valley Elementary School. I ask that you would, would look at the facts and data we are presenting before you and keep our school open and alive. I honestly also hope that you listen, you hear, and accept the real concerns that Bear Valley parents brought to you today to change your agenda in closing all schools down in Anchorage, especially my children's school, Bear Valley Elementary.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we have Jessica Oswald and Lindsay Watson. And seeing only one person coming up, Cameron Vincent Wang is next on the list. You will state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Lindsay Watson. I'm here as both a parent and a high school English teacher and department chair of the district. I'm concerned about the proposed seven and eight-period day schedule change for high school students. A recent video shared by ASD claimed that the overall instructional time in a school year would increase with these new schedules. But there's a difference between total instructional time and instructional time per class. If we go to a seven-period day, that's equivalent to roughly three weeks of instructional time lost per class per year. And eight-period days, the loss of five weeks of instruction per class. At the work session earlier today, it was implied that good teaching could negate these losses. But these are entire units of study. In my class, three weeks is a research paper. Five weeks is all of Shakespeare, not just analyzing a play but writing an essay on it and conducting a mock trial. These assignments teach important skills, critical thinking, analysis, and critique. They require research, logic, and public speaking. Do I cut them? In reality, if we went to an eight-period day, we'd likely be expected to teach a hundred percent of the material in eighty percent of the time. This translates to a twenty percent increase in homework per class and whatever the additional two electives require. This year, ASD ruled out school start time changes, causing a massive upheaval to the lives and schedules of both parents who have elementary-aged kids and business owners with affected employees. Personally, my family has had to rearrange our lives so that our eight-year-old daughter doesn't come home to an empty house. It's taken shifted work hours for my husband and the help of my parents. But we're lucky. I know of families who are paying a thousand dollars a month for after-school care. I know of others where one parent has gone part-time, so someone is home when their kids get home. This is a huge financial sacrifice. And we did all of this so that our high school students would get more sleep and attend school during hours when they're more alert. But if we go to a seven or eight-period day and give them significantly more homework per class, they're going to be exhausted. Our students have lives outside of school. Sports, jobs, siblings to care for, religious activities, and families who would like to occasionally see them. If they try to maintain these things while also completing all of this extra homework, they'll be up until two or three in the morning. They'll be sleep deprived and won't be alert in school, which completely undermines all you've asked of our community. Or worse, they'll simply give up because it's impossible to do it all. They won't learn what they need to learn. They won't be prepared for class. Their grades will suffer, and our graduation rates will drop. Please don't make a decision that undermines all of the sacrifices of this community. And please don't sacrifice the education of our high school students for an additional elective or two. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Mr. Vincent Wang, and then Kayla Callahan is next on the list.
All right. Good evening, Anchorage School District School Board, Dr. Bryant and district leaders. My name is Cameron Vincent Lang. I'm the assistant principal at Rolka Shula German Immersion School. Had the pleasure to work with Rolka for seven years as a teacher, an APC board member, and now a school administrator. I'm so grateful for the opportunity for all of you to learn more about our amazing school and its unique program later in the evening. I am a lifelong Alaskan and grew up attending ASD schools. One of the outstanding characteristics of ASD is that students and their families are provided with many different learning opportunities. Most of my experience with ASD has been with various choice options that the district offered. As a student, I attended Polaris, graduated from the service seminar program. I have taught in and now helped lead another choice program in our district, Rolka. Being provided options always allows our students to find the best modality of learning possible. My experience with Open Optional helped me to develop a strong relationship with my education. Rolka Shula offers a unique way of learning through the immersion model of language learning. I am amazed each day when I come into our building, I see nearly five hundred students continuously building their language skills and developing tools as lifelong learners. Each day, our students move in the direction of becoming biliterate, globally aware. Each day, our students move in the direction of becoming biliterate, globally aware and locally engaged. These outcomes do not come without the collective effort of our students, our community and our incredible staff. Furthermore, it is our partnership with ASD that has helped us to develop a strong and meaningful choice program for students throughout our municipality. We are proud to be a public charter school. We are also proud to be an ASD school that focuses on academic excellence and student success. I want to extend an invite to any of our school board members or district administration to come and visit our school. I would love to share with you the school that I am so fortunate and proud to be a member of. And lastly, I want to say to all of our students that have testified tonight, it's been truly inspiring to hear your testimony. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Kayla Callahan and then Chris Lyle is next on the list.
My name is Kayla Callahan, I'm here to testify against the proposed closure of Bear Valley Elementary that was presented to the public last Friday as part of the initiative to right-size ASD. As a parent of a current, as a parent of a current Bear Valley student, a future Bear Valley Cub, and as an active educator in one of the secondary schools that directly receives students from Bear Valley. I'm shocked and appalled by ASD's desire to permanently close Bear Valley Elementary. There are many reasons that the closure of Bear Valley Elementary would be a short-sighted and tragic mistake. The primary reason that closing Bear Valley would be detrimental to ASD's larger learning community is because Bear Valley has a long and proud history of high student achievement. During the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four year, Bear Valley Elementary was one of the top achieving elementary schools per the AKSTAR State Proficiency Exam. In math, Bear Valley had sixty-eight point seven nine percent proficiency, which was the second highest overall elementary school in the district and the highest non-charter elementary. The three schools that have been proposed as replacement schools for Bear Valley students, should the board approve of the closure, are achieving ten percent or more below this mark. Huffman Elementary at fifty-seven percent, O'Malley at fifty-three percent and Rabbit Creek at fifty-two. In language arts, Bear Valley Elementary has sixty-one point six three percent proficiency, which was the fourth highest overall in the district and second among non-charter schools. Behind only Rogers Park Elementary, which houses the highly gifted program and should, based on all marks, markets be topping the charts. Again, the three proposed replacement schools achieved well below with Huffman Elementary at fifty-six percent, O'Malley at forty-seven and Rabbit Creek at fifty-six. As an educator, I can assure you that top test scores do not just happen, the school environment plays a huge role. Bear Valley Elementary has done an outstanding job cultivating and creating a school environment that is supportive and encouraging to all learners. The teacher support staff before and after school program and administrator, administrator are top-notch. They work hard to create learning opportunities outside of school hours that encourage curiosity and a passion for learning, including art clubs and activities, school performances, STEM night dances and cultural celebrations and much more. There's very little turnover in staff indicating that the teachers and staff feel encouraged and supported by administrators and parents. Bear Valley also has the most supportive and invested PTA in the district. I ask you, why would you want to demolish this environment? Why would you want to discourage students by forcing them to attend lower achieving schools? How is this what is best for students? As a district, we are faced with a drastic teacher shortage. Why would, why would you actively vote to close a school that does not suffer from teacher retention? If anything, it is a school that teachers strive to teach at. Bear Valley currently has no open positions active inside frontline. This cannot be said for the three proposed replacement schools. Huffman currently has two, O'Malley has three and Rabbit Creek has one. By voting to close Bear Valley, you are actively telling teachers and support staff across the district that it does not matter how engaging your lessons are, how well you create personal connections with students or how good your test scores are. The students, teachers and support personnel are not as important as the bottom line. By voting to close Bear Valley Elementary, you're not doing what is best for students. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Mr. Lyle. You will state your name for the record, you have three minutes.
My name is Chris Lu. I'm a parent of a nine-year-old at Bear Valley Elementary. Good evening, I know that you've had a very long evening. And we got to stop meeting like this, as you may recall, I testified last year to support the Ignite Program. And was very appreciative of the wisdom of this board to recognize the importance of holding quality. In a very difficult, difficult decision of weighing between terrible and awful choices. I work in a profession, I work as a superintendent, I'm one of the ones that run the jail downtown. I know about custodial care. I know how difficult it is day to day to keep not only people safe. This includes those that you're caring for, but also your staff, those that support me and my fellow superintendents in the work that we do. I cannot add anything that my fellow friends, families, teachers, children. I was watching from home, some of the testimony, brought you as a snapshot, a picture of Bear Valley. And I'm going totally off script, I know that some of my friends here are probably going, Chris, this is not what you're supposed to say. But let, let me just make the observation. I had the opportunity to talk to one of you, just happenstance or a couple of you today, happenstance, and I fully, fully do not envy you folks that stand up and put yourselves before the, the people of Anchorage and get yourself elected and are now sitting why you would want to sit in, in a position of making horrible choices, horrible choices. But you're here. And again, you're facing a very difficult choice. You have a crown jewel of a school. And I know it's a difficult way to have to navigate, but I think you have been presented with very, very good evidence. Questions to ask the administration in terms of data points, I ask you to dig. Maybe slow this down a bit and really be decisive.
Thank you for your testimony. Next is Solvig Johnson and Sydney Olson. You will state your name for the record, you have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Solve Johnson, I, excuse the uniform, I came from work, I actually haven't seen my kids today. I'm here because we are probably the anomaly, you have a lot of parents here that are really excited about their neighborhood school. I lotteryed in to get into Bear Valley. My kids are not exceptional. You've been hearing about the parent testimonies of children that are in advanced placement classes and call, and going to college. I have a kid on a five oh four. We are struggling with our education and supporting my children. My husband quit his job to be the caregiver so that they could go to additional classes and tutoring. I can't be the only one. I have a master's in nursing education. I serve in the public health service. I grew up in Alaska and my father was a teacher in Tetlin. For his entire teaching career. You have a lot of people here that are obviously running data. That's what I do as a profession now. So I'm curious how this school ended up on the list because the data as everyone has been coming and talking to you about it today is very compelling. So I can only assume that you're going to share your data in those decision points. But from an emotional component, as a mom, as a nurse, as a lifelong Alaskan, as someone who lotteryed in for all three of my children to attend Bear Valley because we desperately wanted them to have the best opportunity possible, I am disappointed that this even came up on the list. I do not envy your decisions or having to carry this burden, but I really, I challenge you all to think about what this says to our community and how you value education and the effort that the community puts into supporting their teachers and their staff. Because this really sends a message, and I think someone said it much better, that the test scores don't matter, the points don't count, we're still going to get rid of your school. I hope that that won't be the case and that you've heard today, the testimony of so many parents and community members that really value and put a huge emphasis on how important this school is to all of our children. And what it also is and could be as a stellar example to the ASD. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. And again, Sydney Olson, you're here. Stephen Rowe. And then Larissa Aberg. You will state your name for the record, you have three minutes.
Thank you, my name is Stephen Rowe, I currently have three kids in the Anchorage School District. I have been a member of the Bear Valley family for over eight years now, as my second child is working his way through. I have four more, and then I also have my niece and nephew who are very excited to attend Bear Valley two years from this, end of this season. I'm not the sharpest tool in the shed, I'm a construction guy, so I'm going to kind of talk to you tonight from that standpoint. Currently, right now, I hold four contracts with ASD for construction work in seven different schools throughout the district. In my career, I've completed either run, managed or swung the hammer myself on almost a hundred million dollars worth of construction work for the district. When I chose where I wanted to live to grow my kids and my family, I can tell you it was an insider decision because I've been in a majority of the schools within the district and I've worked in most of them. And I know the people running them. When I look at it and this came up on the list, I was very confused by the fact that just a few years ago in the twenty-two and twenty-three summer, there was two point three million dollars put into Bear Valley as earthquake repair. And I understand how was damage come from the earthquake, but at the same time, it was fed reimbursement and those repairs did extend the longevity of the school and its operating condition. The same time, I can say in the seven schools I'm currently working in right now, not one of them can say they don't have a leak in their roof, Bear Valley can say that. Not one of them can say their air handlers and the mechanical systems are operating correctly, Bear Valley can say that. Not one of them can say that their floors and structural members are in perfect working condition, Bear Valley can say that. I can tell you as a contractor, it's something unfortunately I stare at in every single room I walk into. Even how the ceiling grid here is crooked by about two inches over fifteen feet. It's just something you end up doing. The school's in great shape, so it's very hard for me to understand, especially when I'm working in all these other schools, why we'd close one of the best functioning schools within the district currently. The other one, I know I'm running out of time here, was talking about the potential growth. I pulled up your ASD map today and I started making phone calls just out of my phone to friends of mine who own other construction companies. And I found over a hundred and forty-seven houses that are going to be going up in the next four years in just the Bear Valley District alone. If you were to close this school and transfer the kids down, like it was said earlier, you'd be getting occupancy rates at ninety-six to ninety-eight percent. When those homes are built, those children are going to have to disperse between those schools and they won't be able to take the overflow. The only option you'd have at that point is relos. And I can tell you, they're not fun, they don't serve a good educational purpose, they just suck in the end, to be honest. I urge you to keep the school open, I look forward to speaking to you at the next opportunity, thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Larissa Aberg. You will state your name for the record, you have three minutes.
All right, Larissa Aberg. Hi there, good evening. Okay, so here we are. So I was just kind of, I had a whole speech planned and I'm going to kind of go in another direction, so bear with me a little bit. So I pulled up the word community. In Latin, that means communutis, which means public spirit. So I don't think anything defines Bear Valley more than that, than a public spirit. Not only is it a cornerstone for our community, we just celebrated our fortieth birthday, as you know. But it's, it's, it's part of our community, so it's, it's a place for our children to feel safe, to grow. And from my standpoint, I'm on the PTA board as well. I have two twins that just started kindergarten this year and a second grader. But I've built so many like lifelong relationships with parents. And so that's, not only are you breaking apart our school, but you're breaking apart some relationships. You're going to be dividing our, our community into three different places. And I really want you to think about that. Seventy-five percent of our teachers have been there for over five years, they want to be there, they want to see our students grow. And I even have friends, a specific friend of mine that her, her kids no longer go there, but she still volunteers sometimes or she'll substitute teach. So it just goes to show how deep those relationships go and how deep that connection to Bear Valley goes. So I think, just, I want you to just, again, think about the community aspect of Bear Valley. I even have a friend that started kindergarten at Bear Valley forty years, forty years ago. And if you walk around our school, you'll probably meet one of our teachers that is still there, that was his kindergarten, kindergarten teacher. So it just, again, goes to show what you would be taking away from our community. Another thing I wanted to, to mention is, so I'm a product of the Anchorage School District, so is my husband. We decided to, we were on the west side of town and we were really thinking about actually moving out of Anchorage. We were like, I don't know about opportunities for children, then we just decided to invest. We purchased a house specifically in the Bear Valley side of town, knowing that we wanted to go to Goldenview, we wanted to go to south. And then, you know, if that's something that you'd take away, this amazing school, this blue ribbon school for two years standing, I don't know if this is the place that we want to be. Is this the community that we want to keep our children in? I don't know. So I didn't want, my son wrote you a letter that I wanted to review. It says, please do not close our school in the front. So he says, dear school board, I don't want you to close the school because our school is the best. Our school here helped us read and helped me learn, this is Bear Valley, from Bruce. Just wanted to show that, pull out your heartstrings a little bit. And then these are for my, my girls, my twins, so they wrote, also drew you some artwork, so, thank you.
Time has expired, thank you very much for your testimony. Heather Woolrich and Kimberly Cole.
Am I the only one? Hello, I'm Heather Woolrich, I am a parent of a former Bear Valley student and an ASD educator for twenty-five years. I've worked at all schools from, well, a lot of schools from Mountain View to Bear Valley. I have helped work on the early stages of our SEL standards and co-wrote our K-two science curriculum. I work as a technologist and a site-based math specialist. For over two decades, I have worked to improve education for all students in the Anchorage School District. This has led me to receive the Presidential Award of Excellence for Mathematics and Science Teaching. And that is why I've spent my life focusing on students and education over these years. And I'm so confused and shocked that the district is looking to close Bear Valley. While reviewing the metrics, I'm left with more questions than answers. While there is a matrix for these recommendations, the scoring guide released this out, at this afternoon's work session was impossible to read and needs to be available for the public to review. Online, the educational services is listed as the first major factor. I'd advise you to look at our current and past test scores. You can also look at the Department of Education's school ranking list. Out of the four hundred and ninety-eight schools listed for the state, not a single elementary school ranks higher than Bear Valley. As Jim Anderson stated this afternoon, high-performing students will do well at any school. This is not true. When students are already asking today, what did I do wrong that they're going to consider closing our school? These actions are having a huge toll on our students' emotional well-being, which impacts their learning. You looked at balanced classes and full-time tech staff support, that was under consideration. Last year, we had two class grades at each level with kindergarten having three. According to your information on the website, our school shouldn't have been considered due to this factor. According to your information on the website, our school shouldn't have been considered due to this factor. We have forty-three students on our current waitlist, but we need more teachers to support them. Mr. Anderson stated today that Bear Valley was dinged for having point-four art teacher and point-four health teacher. Elementary schools have rotating art and health teachers, and they are considered point-five teachers, making them a full-time teacher between their two schools. Our other specialists are full-time teachers. While our facilities are older, they are not as old as, not as old as the sites that you're proposing our students move to. Repairs have been done, and we are slated to have more than nine million community-approved bond work completed next year. Now, with rightsizing being your recent focus, I think we might have forgotten to look at doing what's right for students. As a district, we should be setting high standards, encouraging academic excellence, and fostering caring and resilient community members that will become our future leaders and voters. These things happen at Bear Valley each and every day. You are invited into my classroom at any time to see the excellence in education that is happening at Bear Valley that you are thinking of demolishing.
Your time is up. Thank you very much for your testimony. You will state your name for the record, you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Kim Cole, and this is my seventeenth year working at ASD. My intention was to stay through at least twenty-five years, but after hearing about the plan to switch from a seven to an eight, or from a six to a seven or eight-period day, I'm having second thoughts, as are lots of other Tier Two teachers. Tier Three teachers can leave without ramifications to themselves, only detrimental consequences to the district. You really don't wanna lose these experienced professionals. Using ASD's own numbers, going from a six to an eight-period day would increase our overall contact time by eighty hours. So the only logical assumption is that you're planning to add about three weeks to the school year, but this hasn't been explicitly stated anywhere. At the same time, each individual class is reduced by twenty-eight hours, or seven weeks, which is almost an entire quarter. Yet we're required to teach the same amount of material, which is impossible. We need to focus on teaching depth, not increasing the breadth of classes. ASD claims we'd have less homework as a benefit, but that would be impossible under these circumstances. ASD claims teachers will have more collaboration time. The only way that's possible is if we follow a middle school model, yet ASD has frequently put this model on the chopping block during teacher contract negotiations. It makes no sense for you to now ask to expand something that you've been actively trying to eliminate for decades due to cost. Additionally, teams aren't true teams these days, already due to reduced FTE. Why expand something that isn't even working on a smaller scale? We don't have enough certified teachers or paraprofessionals to fill the classrooms now, yet this plan requires almost double the teachers. We've cut old electives due to lack of FTE. Where are the new teachers coming from? We're supposed to fill the remaining periods with new class offerings from academies, yet no one has any idea what these classes are, who will create the curriculum, or who will be highly qualified to teach them. Can we please get that figured out before shoving an eight-period day down our throats? For a program that is supposed to increase equity, middle college will provide greater inequality. Those who have money will bypass AP classes for weighted free credits, or for the internships and job shadowing experiences. This sounds absolutely phenomenal, as long as your family has money for you to drive yourself. Those who can't afford transportation will be left behind with fewer AP classes, since only privileged kids will be able to take advantage of these opportunities. The new schedule has advisory periods. We got rid of homeroom decades ago, so please provide actual data demonstrating that it's a benefit to students. ASD admits that student achievement and increased test scores have mixed reviews when changing to a seven or eight-period day. Then, without evidence, ASD claims the benefits include: less homework, which I've already debunked, deeper learning experiences, but how can this happen when we're cutting almost two months of instructional time? Improved student-teacher relationships, how can this happen when we have to serve more students with less contact time? A weekly advisory will not replace seven less weeks of contact time per class, and increased course offerings. Again, we have no idea what these will be, or who will be qualified to teach them. Thank you for listening, and please consider slowing down the colossal number of changes happening without determining ramifications before adding new ones.
Thank you for your testimony. And touching back, Kathleen Lyons. Jessica Oswald. Sydney Olson was telephonic, but is not online. John Grace. Kim Wilkinson. I believe that is everyone. That brings our public testimony portion to a close. Do wanna thank everyone for their patience and endurance, and a lot of meaningful testimony. We appreciate it. Thank you. That brings us to Section E of our agenda, the consent agenda. We will take a five-minute recess and then resume the meeting. The first half of the meeting is over. Calling the meeting back to order. At nine nineteen, we are on Section E of the agenda, the consent agenda. And would ask if any member wishes to pull an item from the consent agenda, member lessons.
Thank you, I'd like to pull item number seven, memorandum number six-one, Acceptance of Grant Award FY25, Student Support and Academic Enrichment SSAE Grant Program.
Thank you. Any other members have any other items to pull? Seeing none, the consent agenda is before you for consideration. I will ask Ms. Sullivan to call the roll. Sorry, I do need a motion.
Mr. Chair, I moved to approve the consent agenda, doesn't it?
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Now I will ask Ms. Sullivan to call the roll.
Student Representative-
Student Representative Pack?
Yes.
Member Bellamy?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Lessons?
Yes.
Member Higgins?
Yes.
Member Wilson?
Yes.
Member Donnelly?
Yes.
President Holloman?
Yes. You have passed the consent agenda with the exception of item number seven. That brings us to action items. I would look for a motion to consider item number one.
So Chair, I move to approve A S T memorandum number zero four nine revisions to B P three five one three dot three comprehensive tobacco and nicotine free schools. B P forty twenty drug and alcohol free workplace and B P five one three one dot six two tobacco and nicotine to approve these board policy revisions as amended.
Yep, moved and seconded. Discussion.
I can start as the mover, Mr. Chair, if you'd like. Yep, so thank you. This item's on the action calendar primarily, so. I I think I won't speak for Member Wilson, she'll have a chance to do that, but at least so I could. Take a moment to acknowledge the collaboration that took place between first myself and Member Wilson, then with a community partner in the form of the American Lung Association. And then also with Dr. Bryant and District Administration to modernize and update these three board policies. The board policies effectively bring up to date and into best practice. Our stance specifically and and an area of focus I know for myself was in regard to vaping in particular. We we as a board recently within the last calendar year adopted funds for litigation related to Juul. We have made an effort to address the problems that tobacco products. And the the marketing that has evolved in recent years and how they've impacted our students. I think these board policies. Take the next step in addressing how we interact with students who are suffering from addiction. I. Just in January, the board policy took effect regarding the one hour of education on the science of addiction for many of our students. These policies in particular would, I think, build on that momentum and move away from punitive. A punitive response is our primary course of discipline and and enforce and be proactive in terms of providing additional education for students who are struggling with addiction. I I think that that's not only just a best practice, but also is a more equitable approach to mitigate. Students who may not have have the same opportunities and and therefore are are subject to different stressors and negative opportunities. Both in and outside of a school building. I I will leave my comments there. Would be happy to answer any questions from a member of the board. We've discussed this at length in multiple governance committee hearings. I I think that in future years, there potentially could be an amendment to clean up some of the language and I'll certainly be happy to work with Member Wilson and win it if. That becomes necessary, reasonable, but for now, I think this represents a pretty solid compromise. And I'm grateful for all involved in getting it to this point. Thank you.
Discussion. Member Wilson?
I think Member Jacobs covered it all very well, but I I would like to to also share my appreciation for the collaboration with the administration, the American Lung Association on on the changes and. Updates to these policies. As a as a therapeutic foster parent for the past twenty years. I've had quite a few kids and and my my own kids in my home, my own bio kids had. Probably over fifty kids in my home. We have had a lot of kids that more recently have had issues with vaping and and. Trying out vaping and want to make sure they have the opportunity to be educated on the effects of vaping. In particular, because I see so many vapes come. In the hands of of young people and it's so accessible to to young people now, unfortunately. So I appreciate the the partnership and the collaboration to to change this language and and continued partnership to help our students.
Yep. Other discussion. One question that was posed in public comment that I would ask about. I mean, I I organically support the idea of progressive non punitive intervention. But the question is, does it really prohibit punitive sanctions? If a if a student simply is not cooperative? That was sort of the, as I'm I'm reading it, it. Seems to prevent that, but I also understand from being in schools. Sometimes there's really not another way to get somebody's attention. And I'm just wondering if the wording that we're putting there ties the hands of administrators when they are working with a student that really doesn't cooperate.
Yeah, if I might, Mr. Chair. Yep, so from my perspective is one of the drafters of the the current iteration. It wasn't the intent to preclude discipline that isn't more educational in nature from ever being considered if there's safety concerns related to the school environment. With that said, I think it makes clear that the primary response should be one of education. I I guess I would be interested in hearing from the administration if they felt that this board policy. Precluded them from ever pursuing another path outside of education if and when there was a deemed to be a safety risk at school or. There was a student for whatever reason who wasn't responding to any more progressive and educational. Opportunities to to remedy problematic behavior related to addiction. And then in here, if they have concerns about it, it it was didn't come up as a concern that was addressed in committee or in collaboration with any of our stakeholders.
Student Representative Pack?
Thank you. I'd just like to make first a comment that. In my volunteer service with Anchorage U of Court, one of our most, I won't say popular, but one of the most predominant cases that we take are. Marijuana or nicotine related drug cases. And so I really appreciate it of the new updated language changes to this to the board policies. I do have a question on board policy three five one three. Is it basically requires a lot more signage throughout schools instead of just. Signs the main entrances and wondering if this is like a strict requirement and how schools to have. Like larger schools be able to get the resources to post up these signs.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I could. Yeah, thank you. Appreciate the question, Mr. Pack. This actually came up in a conversation that Member Wilson and I had with our community partner. The American Lung Association. My understanding is that there are potentially resources available for signage that they may have already in position of or may have leads as to how to procure additional signage at minimal. Cost to the district. With that said, if the, in my opinion, if the district needs to invest resources to not only ensure. Student safety, but also mitigate potential cases of addiction going forward. I think that's an investment worth making. Thank you.
Other discussion or questions? Member Bellamy?
Did you ask the administration a question regarding? Whether or not the administration thought the policy was to. Would we prevent them from going to the next level? I mean, in my opinion, all disciplines should be, if possible, progressive, so I don't see that that this limits. We start out with education and we go to the next level depending on the priority, I mean, the. The student, so, but I would like to hear whether or not the administration thinks.
Yeah.
This waters down the discipline or does something.
Progressive, I think, is in there in all cases, but it seemed perhaps to eliminate punitive.
Yeah.
And so that was my question.
That's the question.
Yes, to the administration.
This through the president. My understanding is this was a collaborative process between the the board and the administration, but Mr. Gustafson, would you like to add anything? Thank you. So there are no concerns.
Any other discussion or questions? Seeing hearing none, I would ask Ms. Sullivan to call the roll.
Student Representative Pack?
Yes, oh, yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Higgins?
Yes.
Member Bellamy? Member. Member Wilson?
Yes.
Member Lessons?
Yes.
Member Donnelly?
Yes.
President Holloman?
Yes. You have adopted A S T memorandum number zero four nine. Next on the agenda is A S T memorandum number sixty one. If I could have a motion to adopt.
Mr. Chair, I move to postpone A S T memorandum number sixty one acceptance of grant award F Y twenty five student support and academic enrichment S S A E grant program. To our meeting on twelve seventeen twenty twenty four.
Is there a second?
A second.
Moved and seconded to postpone item number sixty one until our second meeting in December is their discussion.
Mr. Chair, if I might, as the mover, I'll say that my move to postpone this item in in part because I see it aligning and dovetailing with. The decision that the board is scheduled to make in mid-December related to the schedule change, which really underpins our transition to the A O A program. And the next phase of that, the board would have adopted the master plan earlier this year. Laid out a an amendment which set some pretty clear benchmarks that administration was expected to meet. Our community had a role in that as well, and in addition, set out markers of expectations that the board needed to see from our legislature and our executive branch in Juneau. I think that we need to continue monitoring the progress on that. We began that process a bit tonight in that work in the work session, but as I mentioned during the work session, I think. It was it was a bit light in terms of some of the progress monitoring elements, if you will, although it was very helpful information and really deeply appreciated. So. I think aligning this memorandum and the related decision. On the schedule change. Seems logical and in line with a practice that we set up months ago to implement the Academies of Anchorage Program deliberately. Based on data and what the district can accommodate in terms of facilitating change. Thanks.
Other discussion or comments? Member Bellamy?
I just have a question. Is there, I'm assuming there's no time restraint on the on the grant?
Mr. Chair, if I might. Yes, please. A great question when I asked during our break. My understanding is that administration has no concerns regarding postponing. This acceptance of grant award to mid-December on twelve seventeen. Thank you.
Member Lessons?
The grant began, grant year two began October first. It is now November. Delaying this until mid-December. Potentially allows for the continued spend down of year two grant funds. What as well as the rollover of grant year one funds, which I believe I asked about in a finance meeting about two months ago. Into year two. So my question is, what is the status of the three point two million dollars? Between essentially October first and mid-December and any remaining year one grant funds? Will they continue to be spent or will this money be set aside if this is delayed until mid-December?
To the superintendent?
Through the president, Mr. Ratliff or other team member, would someone like to address the the impact of the delay on the spend down?
Right, thank you. Yes, I think, you know, we do have some positions in this grant already and just like any of our grants that are multi-year like this, they would continue to be spent against. So Mr. Lessons raised a good point that it would be. We would continue to spend those. We're not going to suspend paying these folks salary and move into a different funding source in the N R M. But as far as the process to delay it from the administration's point, unless there's going to be a huge change in how those funds are spent. Then we're we would be fine with delaying it till December.
Other discussion? Member Jacobs?
Yep, just a point of clarity. What I think I just heard from Mr. Elephant, I appreciate the response, was that if we have ongoing expenses for staffing or personnel, that those would continue to be paid. Until the board makes a decision until at at on our at twelve seventeen. I would hope that this motion to postpone sends a pretty clear message that we would avoid incurring new expenses on these funds. And if not, if you would like to make that instruction more, if you'd like to have more explicit instruction from the board, perhaps we can discuss that and if we need to workshop some. Wording, I'd be happy to take a a brief adise. Thanks.
What what is the motion as it stands now? Can you reread it? Because it's not on the.
It's just a motion to postpone.
To postpone, okay, till this time specific.
A time certain of twelve seventeen.
I had a request for a brief adise. It will take five minutes.
I'm sorry? I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah.
Member Higgins would come to order. All right, much appreciated, uh. So after after clarifying with uh Member Lessons and District Administration, I think we've got a a path forward, which would ensure that um the, I think there's a better also in understanding as regarding the the current level of spend and the um mitigation of any downside of us postponing this decision and associating it with with the schedule change. This uh vote that's going to occur in twelve seventeen, and so us postponing is going to have minimal to no impact on on any area of concern um related to the the memorandum that I am aware of, and so would encourage a yes vote, and I believe that's been endorsed by Member Lessons and Administration, but if if I'm incorrect, I'm sure someone will speak up. Thanks.
Other discussion. Seeing no hands, the motion before you is to delay until the second December meeting uh consideration of item number sixty one. Uh, we'll ask Miss Sullivan to call the roll.
Student Representative PAC?
Yes.
Member Donley?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Lessons?
Yes.
Member Higgins? Member Wilson?
Yes.
Member Bellamy?
Yes.
President Holloman?
Yes. You have um delayed consideration of item number sixty one until the second meeting in December. That brings us to our non-action items. Are there any items anyone wishes to pull for discussion? Member Higgins?
Well, I guess there's several on here that we're going to be talking about with the bond proposals and all that, so you want us to go ahead and submit some proposals in advance of that becoming an action item? Is that the goal at this point, or or are we just for general discussion?
Um, right now, it would just be if someone wanted to discuss them, ask questions or whatnot. Any amendments or changes would happen at the next meeting when they are on the agenda as action items.
Okay, I I know that the one action item, and I've made reference to it, is you got uh having to do with Abbott uh loop again, it it uh the, you know, Alaska Native Charter School, and here it talks about it may, I think if I use it quotes, doesn't have a fire suppression system, that's not accurate, it does have one, it doesn't meet the code. Uh, is what the issue is, and they talk about the demolition and destroying it. Um, I just know how much it means to the native community to that. And so uh for a matter of a few million or something, whatever it is to meet the code, uh, they would end up having school. If we we got nine charter schools or seven, I don't know how many charter schools we've got right now, but given the number of schools we're even looking at closing, we won't have enough to house all of them anyway. So we're going to be short of providing them a safe school uh location in regards to the construction within our schools. So that's one that will be coming up. I know I've asked for the cost, and I will be pushing that issue, and I hope we we start every school board meeting with a with a discussion of, you know, appreciation for denying a land, and this is precisely the kind of issue that ties into that. So I just see that coming up, I'll just let you know that's something I'm I've asked for a cost estimate, and I'll be pushing that one.
Which item?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask.
Uh, which item number?
Item.
Forty one or forty two, I'm guessing, but.
I'm sorry, I don't know. Order. Um, which item number are you referencing?
I have to go back and reread it, but I think it's number two, uh, number memorandum forty one, talking about six-year capital plan. Is that correct, Jim, or you? That where that's at?
That's correct. It's uh AST memorandum zero four one.
Yeah.
And it has the six-year capital improvement plan.
Right.
Um, for each of the next six years. And as I briefed during the uh one-on-ones that we had, um, obviously, when you look at that, uh, we didn't make any changes really, um, or very few because we knew the right sizing plan was coming out, so you'll see that in uh year twenty six, you'll see nine and a half million, we think that's being upgraded about sixteen million for Bear Valley. Um, because that was on the list and and we kept it in the CIP because it's really a draft pending the outcome of uh, the right sizing decisions on December seventeenth. And you'll also see Abbott Loop uh with a demo at the end of their five years on the CIP, and that's based off the board votes in December and April um, of of a couple of years ago, when when the board voted to close Abbott Loop. So that was the official, that was the last official board guidance, so we did put the demo of Abbott Loop. Um, unless the board's decisions were to be different.
Um, I guess what I would ask is in that item, does it talk about the money to repair Abbott Loop?
It does not.
Okay.
Because the last official board decision was to close Abbott Loop after five years.
Um, so I I think you're asking if we know a cost for sustaining Abbott Loop as a usable building. Um, and I guess at this point, it might be worth saying that would be a pertinent question, and it will come up at the next meeting.
We we do have a guess, but we'll get something a little bit closer and put it in Board Connect, but it is probably around the three and a half million mark just for the fire suppression system. Right now, it has enhanced fire detection, but it does not have fire suppression, which is the water. So the way that, if you were to do this on the cheap, you would punch a hole through all of the classrooms and run a pipe up against the corner and out in the hallway, run a pipe all the way down the corner of the hallway, but to do that, because the school was not designed to have a fire uh a water service that could generate that much pressure into that many water mains, then you would have to also upgrade that water system into the school. And I don't think we've gone out and tried to get an accurate estimate on that piece, so the estimate really will be draft unless the board wants us to invest the funds into um getting a more accurate estimate. That's that's up to the board.
Okay, and at the moment, I would say, given the time we've got to work with, that wouldn't be our most urgent requests. Member Donwin.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I believe it was six years ago that this was on a bond proposition. And at that time, we had an estimate for installing the sprinkler system in there. And um, I know, because I added it to that that bond. And um, so there was an estimate at that time for how much it was going to cost in a plan.
At that time, during that board meeting, um, I believe it was you, but I'll go back and double check. Um, questioned the cost of everything on the bond, and I think nearly every project was just cut by ten percent across the board, is that correct? That's the way I recall it. Um, I'll go back and find that board meeting, and so it dropped it down to three point nine six million. It was originally like four point two eight or somewhere in there, dropped it to three point nine six, that included the uh fire protection system, the water. Um, and it also included moving some walls and a few other things, that's why we believe roughly maybe three and a half million dollars today. Um, when it did go out for bid, just to point this out, we didn't get a single bidder for that project. It's a pretty non-standard project to run water mains at eight feet um, through walls inside interior rooms. Um, and, you know, it was pre-COVID, so it wasn't COVID causing the no bidders, but we didn't get a single bidder for that project.
So, Mr. President, I know it takes a long time to sell bonds and cycle through the expenditure of those bonds. So is any money left from that bond proposition?
Yes, and that would be a a probable source for the demo if the school is demoed. I don't know if it's enough.
Well, how about a probable source for fixing it up so that it's to code, using the money that was already approved for that?
If the board chooses to reverse the decision they made and uh, let me pull up the board memos. In December nineteenth, twenty twenty two, the board voted to close Abbott Loop. In April of twenty three, the board voted to um and approved to let ANCCS occupy not to exceed five years. Also, at that board meeting in April was the contract that we had already discussed with the board with ANCCS saying that they could stay until the end of five years. So if the board were to reverse the decisions they made and on eighteen April twenty twenty three, and on December nineteenth, twenty twenty two, and restore Abbott Loop as a fully functioning future facility, um. One, we would have to go back and look at all the other things we haven't repaired since then, because the board had voted to close it. Um, I really don't know how much money we would need to put into it in in a perfect scenario. A school that already is going to need a new roof, you would raise the roof, put a new roof on, install a a real, a a standard fire suppression system with the pipes running through the centers. Um, you'd still probably have to upgrade the water service for sure. Um, but there might be, as as most of the board members know, once you open up, you got to bring everything you opened up to code. And if the board were to choose for us to do a full analysis on Abbott Loop as a building renewal um, and or a building restoration to raise the roof and do everything to make it good for twenty to thirty years. Um, you know, it certainly wouldn't be one board member that we would go invest the funds to do that, we would we would wait and see if the board wanted to reverse the prior decisions.
So, but, Mr. President, my question was, is there any money left from the bonds that the board approved that might be able to be available for, I think, what number Higgins is suggesting?
I believe I heard Mr. Anderson say there is, but it might not be the same price.
Be enough now. But it is probably pretty close to being able to demo the building. Again, would you want to do a project on the cheap, knowing that the school is going to need a new roof? And if it needs a new roof, you may as well raise it and put in a whole new fire suppression system now that you've raised the roof. I I think it's more complicated than trying to take a plan from six years ago and saying, let's just stick with that one when we know that there's other building deficiencies since then. Um, you know, you really want to give a building twenty years' life when when you do a renewal, and I I don't know that it would make business sense to do a project on the cheap, knowing that ultimately you're going to rip the whole thing out if you raise the roof and put in a more modern fire suppression system. I think that would be, we would definitely have to go back to the drawing board and provide the board. But again, with four board members saying that's the direction you want us to take, other than that, we've got all of the major projects for next summer that we're currently working on trying to get contracts on the streets. And and something will drop, something drops.
Member Higgins?
Let let's let's be clear about this, though. Raising the roof is not a requirement to meet the code. I realize there were some advantages issued to it, but I just want to separate that out, because there was a presentation to the Abbott Loop community council with your predecessor that said that was not a requirement. At one time, I thought it was, they'd have to eliminate the school, build a new one, and that was the only option. Then it became one, they said that's not the case, they came in and said it would be a million dollars, you only got to put something on top of the roof to be able to handle it. They gave a different presentation, and then you're bringing back the issue of of putting a new roof, raising and uh putting a new roof. Is that a requirement to meet the code? Or is that something, because one day we have to replace the roof, at least it's not leaking there like most of the schools? But uh, when that happens, uh, that you think we ought to just go ahead and do that anyway?
Well, the requirement right now is just to punch the holes through the walls and put an eight-foot-high water mains all the way through the classrooms and the hallway, that is the code requirement right now. The question that the board would want to look at is if, as you stated, you want to give ANCCS a building that's going to last for decades, then you're really looking at not just doing that, you're really looking at all the other repairs, and do we want to modernize that building, yes or no? If we just want to keep it going for a few more years and then have another board potentially um, readdress it, I I guess the question is, right now, the administration has a board memo saying it's closed, closed. And we have a board memo saying Abbott Loop can stay there for five years, how much? We wouldn't have a plan to retain the building unless the board rescends a prior board decision, and frankly, that's what makes multi-year right sizing plans problematic is if every year boards can always go back and relook it all the way up until. Um, and we knew that going into a multi-year plan.
Mr. Chair. Um. I I'm I'm getting confused, so we're talking about we're talking, I think the question you asked, if anybody wanted to pull something from from the uh list. Member Higgins, pull forty one, that doesn't have anything to do with the money to repair the bit that, I'm just, okay, what are we talking about?
Um, well, that was a a point of clarification, uh. If we were going to do that improvement, it would be part of memorandum forty one. And the language would have to be added to forty one to reflect that, if the board wanted to put that back in place.
And from a timing standpoint, that's going to impact forty two as well, potentially.
Potential, Member Jacobs?
Thank you.
Hmm.
Um, so I think we would.
So I think we, we went down this trail because there was a concern that ANCCS may be interested in staying in Abbott Loop Elementary long-term. The board just received a resolution, and the reason we did, we did is because I attended the last ANCCS APC meeting and suggested they provide a resolution to the board with some clarity as to their priorities for their long-term strategic planning. And we had three testifiers at our last meeting, the board will remember, one of whom said they needed stability in their current location. Another said that they appreciate the assistance and they had plans to procure a long-term building, a long-term, a long-term strategic plan to get, get their own building. And I believe another member, and I'd have to go back and actually check the video, but I believe another member of their APC specified that at some point they'd like to return to where the majority of their student population and families that they serve reside are a bit closer to that in East Anchorage. I went to their most recent APC meeting and heard those three points reiterated. And I think we've got a pretty clear message from the ANCCS APC at this point that it is their desire to, one, and I believe this was a decision the board made as part of a previous memo related to the future of Abbott Loop and ANCCS. We allowed ANCCS to utilize Abbott Loop Elementary with the caveat that we recognized that they would receive priority. And I think the word was actually priority consideration for potential future use of another vacant elementary school. And then in addition to that, the the APC pretty clearly articulated that they would, they would like to exercise that, that option, or at least explore that if given the opportunity. The, the other sentiment I heard pretty clearly was that they have a desire to have their own building through coordination with a tribal entity. And they appeared, they seemed to have a path forward to procure funding to that end. I did not at any time hear a clear ask from the APC to the AST School Board that they want to reside in Abbott Loop permanently, which frankly makes sense. So while I understand and appreciate that we want to make the decision regarding the future of Abbott Loop carefully, I think we've already done that. We have set out a path forward where ANCCS is utilizing that building until they have a more permanent place to call home, whether that be another ASD building or a building that they procure through their collaborative partnerships. I don't think there's anything, there's no new information to discuss here. And so I want us to avoid discussing and rediscussing a decision we made now roughly a year ago, without any reason to do so, to the best of my knowledge. So just wanted to flag all that information in context. Thanks.
Any other discussion? And just as a point to ask, I, my understanding was the property, we'd go back to the municipality. Do we have to actually demolish the building before that happens?
We don't actually know. The, the process is that we declare the building excess and, but we want to keep the property. Or we declare the building excess and the property excess to the district's needs. And then the muni would make the decision as to whether it would be demoed or not. In this case, I suspect that would be the case. And then the muni would, would make a decision as to whether they would pay or the district would have to pay. So it's really premature to talk about looking for the funding for the demo of that building, because it, it could very well be with a supportive assembly and a supportive government leadership that declaring it excess would, it's possible. In the past, the, the muni had decided to pay.
Yeah. Thank you. That clarifies it. Any other discussions, questions before moving on? Any other non-action items that anyone wishes to pull for discussion? Seeing, hearing none, we will move through Section H to the superintendent update.
Mr. President, I'll be brief this evening. One, I just want to encourage the community to, to vote if you have not already. I know that there's a lot of focus on the top of the ballot, but really it's those state legislature and state representative seats. So the most consequential to what we've been discussing today, which is the future of education. And there is a lot on the line, so be informed and please vote. And lastly, I want to thank everyone who came, came out to testify tonight. And really, my focus is to listen. We've shared a lot about our rationale for why we move forward, why we continue to go down this path of having difficult conversations on rightsizing our facilities. And really, the, the best next step is to hear from our community and what there's, what's on their hearts and minds, but also are there things that are not captured in the rubric that the board needs to, to consider as we approach our decision date in December. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chair. Yes, a question for the superintendent, please. Yes, yeah, thank you. So as a, as a follow-up to our discussion of the consent agenda, consented item that was pulled related to the SSAE grant, AST memorandum number 061. I'm hoping administration is open to adding an RFI if another board member seconds specifically to explore the flexibility on the grant award and the funds associated with it for an alternative purpose that deviates from what is outlined in the, potentially in the grant application. Thanks.
Are there other board members?
Second.
Second. Any other member lessons?
I cut you off. Any other comments on that?
Oh, yes, on that particular note.
Okay, correct. That's what I was anticipating you were going to say, but, well, I would, I'd like to just add a couple of thoughts to Member Jacob's RFI. I think that it is an entirely appropriate request. When we move to delay memo 061 just now to December, to the date when our vote on the schedule change is also slated, those two things could be paired. I think it's, it would be extremely helpful to have something like formal approval in hand from the U.S. Department of Education to, to explain whether those funds can be leveraged in any other way, specifically aligned with our board goals for reading, math, and graduation. And whether as well on spent grant funds from year one could be sort of carried over into essentially, you know, your, whether those funds could be leveraged from whatever is left over in year one and year two for potential use during the FY26 budget conversations. Again, to move our board goals forward in as austere an environment as we are expecting. So I think furthermore, I would be happy to discuss, I don't know, some additional follow-up perhaps in committee meetings, whether it's governance or finance or communications, sort of figure out which is the right fit. But, but if you would be able, as Member Jacobs suggested in the RFI, to bring the board a response of some sort from the Department of Education's Office of Elementary and Secondary Education, which issued the grant in the first place, as to whether it can be leveraged in many ways.
So I can definitely be prepared for the possibility of how we could repurpose the grant. With that said, essentially, you know, let's say the academies were not to move forward. We would need to put quite a bit of thought as to how we want to approach our college current life readiness goal. I wouldn't want to prematurely ask the Department of Education if they would approve X idea if we've not run X idea by the board as well. I just want to make sure that we're aligned and that whatever alternative plan, if there is an alternative plan, is approved by the board first before the Department of Education is involved. If that makes sense. In other words, between now and December, is the ask for the administration to develop an alternative to meeting the CCL goal, which we would then provide to the Department of Education, was already funded, an alternative route to meeting the application that we submitted?
I guess I envision the ask as perhaps at this point being hypothetical in nature to the department. If new priorities were presented or conceptualized, could those funds be redirected, given the dire straits, given the fiscal realities, given our student outcomes that we know are presenting?
That, that makes sense. Member lessons, more of a hypothetical. But really, I think that the true work would need to be done if the board moves a different direction with the appropriation of funds for CCL. I think we need a bigger conversation as to how we're going to improve graduation rates, which will be a goal regardless of whether academies is the pathway to doing that or not. So a lot of work would need to go into it. I don't want to undersell the experience that the team and the board has gone through to get to where we are today. So I don't want to promise that we'll do all of that in eight weeks, but a hypothetical makes it more clear and tangible to me.
Yeah. And if I could just follow up, I just think it's important to remind ourselves that this application, based on, you know, you sent us the document at some point, it has a sort of a, some kind of a July 2023 date. It was brought forth by the administration, I believe, as a good faith effort to move the board's prior CCL goal forward. That CCL goal no longer exists. That CCL goal used to read, beginning with the freshman class in September 2020, the percentage of high school students graduating life-ready as well as college and or career-ready will increase from a baseline of TBA percent in spring of 2022 to 90% in spring of 2026. It lacked anything specific. There were no metrics, and there was no mention of graduation rates. Since that time, in January of 2024, we create, we adopted, we refined the CCL goal to be focused on, on moving graduation rates. So in a sense, you know, we've changed the bar on you. And I think it's relevant to understand that the good faith application was done under guidance that in a sense has altered in, in every any time. And we've also received, since the 2023 application was sent, the embargoed 2023 AK-Star data, as that didn't come out until March of 2024, as well as 2024 AK-Star data, which only came out earlier, you know, six, eight weeks ago. So I think that there is a robust suite or set of information. And those are just a few data points that could be relevant to any potential redirection of funds. But really, I think the ask, I hope that I, we're communicating is really hypothetical in nature. Are the funds fungible?
Makes sense. So hypothetical, and then also it sounds clear, and I just want to say this out loud so people can correct me if I'm mistaken. The board does not want to leave that $15 million on the table and give it back to the federal government if there's a way for us to repurpose it for some end to meet our goals.
No, if there were a soundtrack, it would be something along the lines, go on, take the money and run.
Member Donnelly?
Yeah, thanks. There was testimony tonight about the absence of textbooks for Algebra II. And I just wanted to identify that my twins, also their Algebra II class, doesn't have textbooks either. So I was hoping that the administration could look into what's happening there.
Yeah, thank you, Member Donnelly. I'd like to personally investigate that myself. That was news to me, the Eagle River, and I think Service High School don't have textbook, so we need to urgently look into that. Unless there's something that you want to clarify right now, otherwise I want to give us time to thoroughly investigate this.
Thank you, Dr. Bryant. So just for some clarification, that a majority of our new curriculum, Algebra I, Geometry, and Algebra II is available online for students through their Chromebooks. But we can get much more detailed information from the board as well.
Member lessons?
So just to clarify by saying that the majority of Algebra, of Algebra, Geometry, and Algebra II, my daughter is in Geometry right now, and indeed, there is no textbook this year. We just, we don't have textbooks. It's not a site-specific situation.
There is a growing movement around the country that almost everything is going to online. Textbook companies are actually not even producing very many textbooks anymore. And so most of it is online, and that's what we were adopting last year. When we came through with adoption, it was mostly online program. But we're going to look into exactly what's going on with the, the testimony that happened this evening.
Any other questions or reactions to the superintendent or his report? Member Donnelly?
Yeah, this is some sort of movement throughout the district. I'd like to know about the effacy of it. I think textbooks are important. And if we're discovering what the testimony was tonight, that students are struggling because of the lack of them, I think the board should know about that.
We're going to look into, Member Donnelly.
Other comments or questions in regards to the superintendent's report? Seeing no hands, we will move to school board and administration comments. We'll start to my left with Member Higgins.
Well, I'm going to start by thanking how many people came here to let the board know where they stand on issues, whether it's school start times, academies, Bear Valley. But the fact is that the voice of the public is being heard. I appreciate that. I appreciate the, the students particularly always impress me when they come here, resume building, I think. But I'm impressed with that aspect. This morning, I, because I saw Bear Valley on there, I went by there just to take a look at it. And they had a meeting, and there's 60 parents there. I did not show up with that intention at all within it, but it was there. And I had a chance to walk through the school. I was impressed with the conditions of the school. I know they've done things with a roof. And I, I think, looking at the review of what we've got for selection, how that comes out to be a one under facility, and I look at two to being a two, and they need a new roof, need a new entry. In fact, three years ago, they talked about, it's not salvageable. They really need to build a new one. And it, it just doesn't make sense to me. So, but, but that's not relevant. The big relevant is what's best for the kids. Even if you come out with a formula, just step back from it and say, is this in the best interest of the outcomes for the kids? And, and Bear Valley, of course, is, is, I think, a very successful school. So I hope you're careful listening, review, consider all the various odds and ends. But I can tell you, it takes me by my Google map, it takes me 14 minutes to drive there. It took me probably 24 minutes, because that is icy area. Everything else is kind of dried up a little bit. That's icy. It's a slip. You're going to be going up and down the mountains there. You're going to be going all over the place. Transportation is a safety concern with that group. And that's a, that's a big issue from my perspective. I didn't, I didn't like driving there. I never do. I wouldn't buy a house there, wouldn't consider it because of the driving up and down. And I know an individual who, you know, had a tragic accident there and, and his daughter hit a moose because he couldn't stop and, and total that. So it's, it's just, it's an interesting situation. But the question is, I hope we step away from the, from the rubic and just say, wait a minute. Regardless of the outcome, is this in the best interest of the academics for kids to be successful? And I think that's a, a big concern to me on all of these, that whatever we do, closing the schools may be beneficial from administration's standpoint. But if it doesn't help the, the kids academically be more successful, then that's, that's a big concern. The, we're going to be hearing a lot about the six and seven and eight and a lot of issues there. And I know that that's, and I'll say it again, it's, you got to have the buy-in. You're at the staff, you got to have buy-in administration. I know that at least they have that committee. I'm, I'm glad to hear that. But that's going to be a big challenge from my perspective, because we can't afford to start losing staff for it. We got to be able to make sure staff knows what they're going to be teaching. We've got some big plan. And we just don't have the funding from the state. Now they're trying to figure out some way so that we get less money from the muni. I don't think they could do much more damage than that in what they're doing. And my last comment is, vote. If you haven't voted, vote. It's, it's all citizenship one-on-one is, is it. And I hope everybody in the Anchorage has a chance to vote. Thank you.
Member Jacobs?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just two quick things. The first was, I appreciate everyone who took time out to email, call, or testify in person today. My respect goes out to anyone who's willing to take their time out in the evening to do so. I did want to flag, and I, I hope the board was taking it like I did, that there are sections of our community that we will never see in a board meeting. And we are going to have to be proactive, and I'm speaking to the seven of us, to ensure we're connecting with all portions of our community and not just those who have the bandwidth or capacity to, to make time to attend these meetings. But I am grateful for everyone who But I am grateful for everyone who did take time to do so. The, the other thing I'm really trying to unpack and a takeaway, and I had a great conversation earlier with one of the testifiers, and I'm going to try to better understand is how how much of educational outcomes relate to a building versus when I see impressive academic outcomes, I associate it to the amazing work being done by students, by families, by our educators. And I think that we as a school district prioritize and recognize that's where the excellence happens, because that's where we spend most of our budget. Most of our budget doesn't go to buildings. Our state has cut funding to maintain school buildings over the last decade. And so it in turn is a prioritizing school buildings. It has in turn encouraged the spending of dollars in classrooms. And so to be talking about and associating academic outcomes with buildings, I'm still trying to grapple with that and it's causing some cognitive dissonance, I guess. And so I'm going to really be trying to to associate those two things, because our district and the state simply don't link those two things together based on their actions, not their words. And so just a takeaway from me, I thought I'd share. Thank you.
Member Donnelly.
I believe that there is a correlation between instructional hours and instructional time and academic results. It may not be exactly one to one, because all the instruction is at different levels of efficacy. I, we all know that it's different from classroom to classroom. But I clearly believe there is a correlation between instructional hours and academic success. So I'm very concerned, remain concerned about any proposal that's going to reduce the number of instructional hours, especially in our core curriculum. Especially if it's going to cost us $5 million to actually reduce the number of instructional hours that are being provided to our students in core curriculum classes. So that's very concerning to me. We still have, if we're going to compare ourselves to other states, we have to always remember that this state is, has basically the or one of the two lowest total requirements for academic hours, instructional hours. And over the last few years, the number of hours the Anchorage School District is providing has gone down for various reasons, policy changes. So it becomes even more concerning because it's a trend. And I'm beginning to wonder how much more we can even do and comply with the very, the extraordinary low level of mandatory instructional hours in this state. And we may have to seek an exemption if we go down that from the Department of Education to achieve that, if we fall below the statutory amount. So that's another aspect of this discussion that we had today. On a much more positive note, I'd just like to congratulate the Diamond Football Community for an undefeated season and state championship. And a member Bellamy was saying that her memory was, and my memory is, it probably only ever happened once before to have an undefeated season like that. So I know it takes a community to achieve those kinds of goals in sports. So I just want to congratulate everybody that was involved in that. Thank you.
Student representative back.
This is echo. I was appreciative of all the comments and testimonies I heard tonight, and I was glad I could stick around this late and hope everyone a great night.
Member Wilson.
Please check out our hot topics page on our, on the ASD website. It's an easy way to stay up to date on all of the big projects discussed tonight and will be discussed in the next few board meetings. The Communications Committee held its monthly meeting last week. There were updates on our revamped Legislative Lunch and Learn, Right Sizing Communications Plan and Academies of Anchorage. The recording is on the YouTube channel, if you want to check that out. The November edition of ASD Digital publishes this Friday. So just a heads up on that, and it will have recaps of our Right Sizing ASD project as well as academies and more. Speaking of more, it's Alaska Native Heritage Month, and we have something special to announce. Through collaboration with the Native Village of Iclutna, ASD has officially relaunched its Staff Recognition Program as the Shannan Employee Recognition Program and updated its land acknowledgement. These updates are intended to honor and recognize Indigenous people and Indigenous ways of knowing. It is a privilege to learn from and collaborate with the Iclutna, Dinana during Alaska Native and American Indian Heritage. Excuse me, Heritage Month, we honor the resilience, cultural heritage and achievements of our Indigenous students. As a gesture of gratitude, the Staff Recognition Program is titled Shannan in the Dinana language as a way to say thank you to an ASD employee or volunteer. And also wanted to give a reminder that the MECCAC meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, November 13th, starting at 5:30. And our Communications Committee meeting is coming up on November 21st. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Lawson.
Yeah, I had the good fortune to receive an update from our World Language Program to be on our email list. And I read through it about all of the wonderful things that our myriad immersion programs are doing. And among them was an awesome partnership this past month with Sol de Minninoche. And there, because it's bilingual, it is an insert, so grab your last October copy. And all of the pieces are written by students. Some of them are poems, some of them are reflections on their time in the immersion program. Some of them are things they've learned about the history of Alaska, like the founding of Cordova and Belize. And so anyways, I'm going to put it in the boardroom, and I hope that everybody can take some time and read through it in Spanish or in English or both. But it's really beautiful testament to what our students are capable of doing and becoming. And I just wanted to celebrate that, that really awesome public partnership. I wanted to share that I know that the intent of a lot of today's extended work session was to was part of a response to an RFI I logged back in, I think, August about more information about the Academies of Anchorage and specifically the FACE course. I don't, there was a lot of information presented, but I think that the board still lacks a general, a specific, granular understanding of what is in the freshman academy course, the semester, what the administration intends the freshman academy course to entail for an entire year. I would appreciate, I mean, I guess, please put my RFI back on that log. I want more information about the freshman academy and career exploration course, if we're going to be allocating time, talent and resources towards it. So hopefully we can, we can get there. And then thank you to everyone who showed up with kids with babies in tow, coming fresh off of their jobs. It's not easy to find the time to speak up about anything, especially when things are personal. And I just, I appreciate the people who took time out of their lives to to share what they value with us.
Member Bellamy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I want to congratulate our student representative, Josh. He did, I think it was Saturday morning, I heard this voice on my TV. And it was Joshua, and I think, was it Maggie? Who was it? Grace? Anyway, our students doing a get out the vote kind of, they were interviewing the not the legislators, but our senators, the representatives, and they did an excellent job. So I want to congratulate you guys. Keep doing that. That's awesome. You know, we, we, I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight, too. I mean, I mean, it's, I mean, that's, that's what you do when you want people to know how you feel. But I want this board to remember, we only heard from one school tonight, and there are seven on our list, seven. So we knew that it would be, that this would be tough. We knew it would be emotional. And it's not going to be easy. So if the voices aren't in the room, just don't forget that they exist. And then I'd like to remind our board members that we have, those of you who are attending the AASB conference, if you can show up to serve on the Resolutions Committee, that would be awesome. So that we can be ready for our, that's Thursday, All Day Thursday. And then there is a CEE meeting that's at that evening, a tap, not, not part of the conference, but using that same space so that we can get some updates there as well. Tomorrow is remote learning. And then finally, I just want to thank the staff and superintendent. You guys have done exactly what we asked you to do. We, you didn't just come up with a plan on your own, and you didn't do it without guidance from us. So the work is appreciated and the work is tough, but we get it. So don't feel deflated or whatever those feelings are. Because this is, it's going to, it's going to get worse before it gets better. To get our, get ourselves in a position where all of our kids are going to have the best opportunity possible to be successful in whatever they decide to do at the end of when they leave us. So we're all in the same boat. We're not rowing at the same speed, but we're, we're all in the same boat. So I thank you guys.
I think to comment on Member Bellamy's closing remark, I think the right phrase is, we're all in the same storm. Some of us are in different boats, and I try to get the largest one I can find. I did want to say, there's quite a bit of written testimony that was submitted tonight. As board members, you may know, but you have to go into board docs, go to the agenda for this, go to this meeting, open the agenda, click on written testimony, and then there's a document to the right that would open it. But there, there's over a dozen, I think, submissions for written testimony in addition to what we got tonight. So please don't miss that. Also wanted to comment briefly, a member Jacobs. It struck me, I was teaching when No Child Left Behind came into law. And that was a law that actually had sanctions for schools that didn't meet a certain level of performance. And the highest level was to actually vacate the building and tear it down, which I always thought just seemed odd that you would punish a building like it was in the bricks or something that, that they just couldn't teach right there. But at the same time, I'll also say that it's not just a bunch of classes happening in close proximity to each other. You open a school and you start with staff and you lose some people and you gain some people. And a good administrator gradually pieces together a team that works. And I, I don't think it'll be the case that if you take something high performing, that's really working well together, that has been carefully put together, and you put some of it here and some of it there. I don't think it follows that you necessarily get the same performance that you were getting before. Good schools are a team. They are a collection of really different personalities that fill in a lot of gaps. And they're not all quarterbacks, they're not all centers, they're not all tackles. It takes a lot of different people doing the right thing at the same time to bring all their students along. And, and so to some degree, it is what happens inside a particular building. I, I don't believe the building itself has much to do with it, although nicer buildings are nicer, bigger boats are nicer. But, but there is a risk when you dismantle something that's working well, that has been put together over a long period of time. Also going to say, somehow I got involved in a thing of talking to legislators and going to community council meetings and constituent meetings decades ago. And in all those meetings, it's very common for people to trash our district in particular, public education in general. And it's just kind of the norm. And I've listened to legislators talk about how bad it is with no one challenging that. And so there, there's always a little bit of psychological whiplash when we have to threaten to cut a program or in this case, a building. And people turn out and pour their hearts out in support of what's happening in that building. And they talk about how much it has mattered to their kids, to their family, and how much it matters to them that it continues. I wish we could get all those people in the same room at the same time, because as we all know, the, the people that control how much money we have to spend aren't here tonight, and they're not watching tonight. And yet they're going to vote on a slate of numbers in a really big spreadsheet without hearing that emotion and without hearing their constituents talk about how much they do value public education. Somehow we have to make those things come together, and I'm not sure exactly how to do it, but, but some, at some point we do. I did get out to early vote. I would just say, if you have not voted yet, make a plan, because if you don't know what the weather forecast is for tomorrow, you need to look at that now, especially if you're at any elevation. We're talking six to 18 inches of snow, 75 mile an hour winds, freezing rain, freezing sleet, all the good stuff that just makes a perfect winter day for Anchorage. I don't know how many of you unfortunate folks are going to be up at four o'clock in the morning. I know the superintendent will be. But yeah, tomorrow just may be a day, so good luck arriving at polls. Hopefully everyone in Bear Valley will find a way to make it to their polling voice and make their voices heard that way as well. Again, it, it means a great deal for all the people that came out tonight and spoke and talked about what truly matters to them about what we're doing. That is all I have. I would be delighted to entertain a motion to adjourn, unless someone on staff has something they want to say. Okay, moved and seconded, we are adjourned.